...departments and bureaus, so we'll make sure that they also are aware of the changes in the ordinance and also pass that information on to committees.
Would you give us a quick thumbnail as to how this will operate and when?
Well, again, you know, we're still trying to put it together with the CLA and City Attorney. But basically, committee can go online, submit for an apply for a permit, or they can walk into the office. We will give them the information. We will also give them the tag that they need to place on the bin. We'll have officers out in the field that will be looking for these violators. They will tag them and follow through with the impound procedure.
With that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Also on Wednesday, a report from the Public Safety Committee recommending an ordinance that would require firearms dealers to post a warning of the dangers of possessing a firearm in the home. We first hear from the public on the matter.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Duncan, and I'm representing the Southern California Injury Prevention Research Center at UCLA School of Public Health. I'm also representing the Violence Prevention Coalition of Greater Los Angeles. In the latest data from the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention show that 2,827 children and teens died from firearms in the United States in 2003. That's about one child or teen every three hours. This is a public health issue, calling for prevention measures, so we are in full support of this proposed ordinance, and we ask for a vote of yes. Thank you.
Christopher Peak is our next speaker. After that is Nico Milonopoulos.
Hello, my name is Christopher Peak, and I'm a student at Loyola High School. I'm here today because I know the price of gun violence. I never got to meet my uncle because he was shot and killed by a gun, by someone he knew, someone who had a gun in their home. And before I begin, I just want to read you one quick stat from the Journal of Trauma. For every time a gun is used in a home, an illegally justifiable shooting, so that's one shooting in which they defend themselves from a criminal, there are 22, 22 criminal, unintentional, or suicide-related shootings. That's one in 22 chance. That's about 95, 96 percent chance that that gun's going to be used against the owner or against someone that they know. Organizations like the NRA, they try to proclaim that one shooting in which they defend themselves as being that great thing. They say that the gun's going to keep you safe. The gun industry praises on that fear, on that anxiety, that criminals are going to break into your home. And they say, "This gun, if you buy it, they make this promise, it'll keep you safe." But, and really, the major criminals are the ones that are in the gun industry for selling this product with a 95 percent chance that's going to be used against you or used against your family members. They're the criminals for using this product that increases the risk of suicide five times over. They're the criminals for selling this product that increases the risk of homicide three times over. It's your opportunity now, council members, to have this chance to reverse this promise, to make sure that people know the real truth about guns, about the impact that they can have. That it's your opportunity now to make sure that you can reverse the impact of suicide, reverse the impact of domestic violence involving a gun, reverse the impact of homicide, reverse the impact of accidental shootings. It's your opportunity now, so I urge you to vote in favor of this ordinance for the sake of protecting the lives of the people of the city we call home, Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nico Milonopoulos? Good morning, nice to see you.
Good morning, nice to see you. I'm Nico Milonopoulos, 20-year-old gun control activist and co-founder of Kids Voice L.A. and Vox Populi. Just two months ago, two months and 11 days ago, our country experienced its deadliest school shooting massacre, when a mentally disturbed 21-year-old, 23-year-old student gunned down 32 of his peers and killed himself on the campus of Virginia Tech. In response, our federal government remained silent, proposing no effective measure to curb the shootings that plagues our cities, states, and nation. In Los Angeles, this month, 17-year-old Ruben Garcia-Costello was gunned down while buying groceries. A 15-year-old, and 15-year-old Devon Harris was killed while walking down the streets of the South LA neighborhood. These senseless shootings that cut the lives of our city's future short are unacceptable. This proposed legislation before you today is a step in the right direction. By requiring firearm dealers to post warnings of the dangers associated with keeping a firearm in the home, this motion addresses an issue that is more than a gun safety issue. It's a consumer protection issue. Just as blow dryers have tags warning of the risk of electric shock, cigarette packs have warnings of the risk of cancer from tobacco, and fireworks have warnings of their explosive natures, consumers have the right to know the truth about the hazards of keeping firearms in the home. In just a few minutes, this council will face a decision. Will you follow the lead of the federal and state government by ignoring this issue for political purposes? Or will you stand and lead the charge to create a network of cities in the state and country to end the senseless gun violence? I urge this council to stand and to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one final speaker in Van Nuys. If we can go out to Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler is our speaker in Van Nuys.
I sympathize for the people who have been hurt, but it's not the gun is the problem, it's the person or people, okay? And you can't just say, "Put warnings on everything," because you're ending it, opening up for big lawsuits. This is in violation of people's rights to have a knife to protect themselves, a gun to protect themselves, a car. You're telling everybody, whatever you have, any inanimate object, you've got to have a warning. It's endangering your life, and that means you have no right to protect yourself from the monsters that we have to face today. It's okay just to drop everything you have, just be open pawns, open season to be slaughtered. That's what you're saying, you people who are anti-gun, gun control advocates. You just want us to be victims of these mass murderers who want to murder people by putting on bombs, tying on bombs, going out and shooting people, and you just want to continue to allow people to be slaughtered, like the Holocaust. They rounded up all the people because they gave all their guns away, they turned in their guns. If they turned in all their guns, we wouldn't have to be putting warnings on, oh, guns are hazardous. It's hazardous, you have to be breathing the bad air today, folks. Come on now. So we need to have self-protection, our morality. It calls for us to write to defend yourself. You have a right to protect your country, you have a right to protect what's right.
Giving a brief history of what the city has done to date to impact and control gun violence, District 8 Councilmember Bernard Parks says it is a myth that owning a gun increases safety for your family.
What we're attempting to do today is continue the city's effort over a period of time of impacting gun violence. Just to give you kind of a historical perspective, in 1998, this city took on creating a requirement for records on ammunition sales. In 2006, it became an ordinance, a duty to report a theft of a lost firearm. In 1998, the sale of ammunition clips and similar devices became an ordinance. 1999, the sale and purchase of more than one handgun within 30 days, period, was prohibited. In 2001, fingerprinting of firearm purchasers. In 2001, sale of ultra-compact firearms were prohibited. In 2002, ordinance dealing with possession of guns in the airport. 2005, the sale of large caliber firearms were prohibited. 1997, sellers of firearms prohibited the transfer of Saturday night specials. This ordinance will go in that long list of firearm safety, and that we are putting forth a wording, so that it forewarns individuals about the dangers of firearms. If we go back in our research, we find that most people, as one of the speakers said, they buy guns believing that it's, quote, "for their protection." But most of the data reflects that homes are more likely to use a weapon or have an accidental killing in that home if there is a gun, and it's far more than protecting against an attacker or an intruder. The presence of a gun in a home can turn otherwise harmless moment of frustration into a deadly tragedy. It is clearly an incorrect myth that gun ownership increases safety and the safety of the family. The wording here, again, is something that sends a clear message that in the city of Los Angeles, that guns in the home are much more likely to be used to kill a household member than to protect against an intruder. It is safe, safest not to keep a gun in the home. However, if a gun is kept in the home, it should be kept unloaded and securely locked with ammunition locked up separately. This is something we think just adds to the five-to-seven-year history of this city to continue moving forward on safety in dealing with guns. Even though we are preempted in many instances to deal with gun issues by state law, we have found through a great deal of innovation in legislation to continue to address this issue. And I'd ask that we have an "I" vote to add one more step in gun safety and safety of our community by putting this warning in any store that sells a weapon, or in also on any bill of sale for an individual that buys a weapon. So to ask for an "I" vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
With 11 eyes, that will go to a second reading next week, since we have fewer than 12 members, but receives a positive vote for today.
As an ordinance needs 12 votes to pass on the first reading, the item to require firearms dealers to post a warning of the dangers to possessing a firearm in the home will come before your Los Angeles City Council next week, when only eight votes will be needed for it to become law. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions using the new City of Los Angeles video-on-demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 29, 2007. On behalf of Lauren Hill and everyone here at LA City View, Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles...
There is an Amber Alert.
When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
We have positive on the alert vehicle.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay, tell me what happened.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Do you want to make a report?
No.
(Inaudible)
Brother-in-law doesn't want you to stand there anymore. You all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
(Inaudible)
When we first got there, I didn't know what the heck we had.
16-53, unknown trouble. Male and female are inside of a green vehicle stopped on the Sixth Street Bridge. Spontical three.
Leave us alone!
Grabber's got a gun.
16-253, requesting backup. 415, man, let's go. We're on the Sixth Street Bridge, facing westbound.
Hello? All right, show me around.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Working as a team, they take pride in what they do.
(Inaudible)
We're waiting for your line.
We're not coming out of the car!
Okay, listen, we've got time to work this out.
Shut up!
Let's just talk right now.
It has nothing to do with you, man!
I know you're upset. I want you to talk right now.
The little girl that's missing? What is your name, sir? Hello? Hello? Hello?
The caller's DOA.
Get away from the car! Shoot her! I'm gonna kill her, man!
Listen to me. Why can't you just let her go?
Girl's coming out.
Hey, John, hold the gun, buddy.
Become a part of the team. The LAPD is hiring. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Council Chambers, Los Angeles City Hall. Today is Tuesday, July 3rd, 2007. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Frank Martinez, Los Angeles City Clerk, and I will be the presiding officer for this meeting just until we complete the election of the Council President. The Council meets three times a week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org. You can also listen to Council meetings on Council phone by dialing 213-621-CITY. Members of the public can also provide public comment via remote video from the Van Nuys City Hall, and of course, the Council meets in the Van Nuys City Hall the first Friday of each month. This meeting is now in session. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alec, Concardness, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, thirteen members present, and a quorum.
Okay, this being Tuesday, before we start the business of the meeting, if Mr. Garcetti would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Please place your hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Pursuant to Council Rule Number One, the first order of business today will be the election of the President of the City Council, which requires a majority vote by open ballot. It has been the tradition of the City Council to conduct the election of the Council President by a voice vote conducted in alphabetical order. Unless I hear an objection, we are prepared to proceed in that fashion. Okay, as the clerk calls your name, please state the name of the Council member that you are voting for to be President of the City Council. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Alec.
John Ferraro.[400.02][400.02](audience laughing)
It's a new iteration.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Cardness.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Eric Garcetti.
Gruel, Ms. Gruel.
Eric Garcetti.
Ms. Hahn.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Weezer.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Labange.
I stand for Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Parks.
I sit for Eric Garcetti.[428.03][428.03](audience laughing)
Ms. Perry.
Garcetti.
Mr. Reyes.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Eric Garcetti, with pleasure.
Mr. Smith.
What, Eric Garcetti?[442.33][442.33](audience laughing)
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Wesson? Not here. Uh, Mr. Zine?
How many votes does he need?
Majority.
Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna say a few words in a second, but before that, I wanted, I know a couple of members need to go, and so, with the newly-elected Council President now residing, presiding, we're pursuant to Council Rule Number Two, the next order of business today will be the election of a President Pro Tem of the City Council, which also requires an open ballot majority vote. It's been the tradition of the City Council to conduct the election of the Council President Pro Tem by a voice vote conducted in alphabetical order, so unless I hear an objection, we are prepared to proceed in that order. Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead. As the City Clerk calls your name, please state the name of the Council member that you're voting for to be President Pro Temore of the City Council. So, Mr. Clerk, please proceed with a vote.
Mr. Alec.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Cardness.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Garcetti.
Wendy Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Wendy Gruel.
Ms. Hahn.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Weezer.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Labange.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Parks.
Wendy Gruel.
Ms. Perry.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Reyes.
Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I stand for Wendy Gruel.
Mr. Smith.
Can we have a riding Zuma Dog?[604.23][604.23](audience laughing)
Wendy Gruel, my dear friend.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Wesson.
Gruel.
Mr. Zine.
Wendy Gruel.
That is a fifteen-zero vote. Congratulations, Ms. Gruel, our President Pro Temore.[622.03][622.03](audience applauding) Mr. Wesson?
I, in the hallway, was unable to get here for your Council vote, I would have definitely nominated you and-
Thank you.
...support you for President, so-
I appreciate that very much.
-I do wanna go on the record to say that.
Well, we can-
I wanna make sure Rick Orloff heard that.[650.73][650.73](audience laughing)
Thank you, sir. Uh, while she's around, why don't we go ahead and reconsider the first item? If we can open the roll and reconsideration, we'll add you.
I'll stand next to her.
I think she has to be back in a quick there. Are you gonna be able to come back?
We have to go back.
Well, we've got everybody here. I mean, everyone's people have already left.
Okay, okay, okay. Actually, we can't, 'cause Ms. Hahn had to leave, but we will have the record reflect that, and thank you, Mr. Wesson. Colleagues, if, as we begin a new session today, I know Ms. Gruel has a few words to say as well, but I want to thank, first of all, our great City Clerk, Frank Martinez. I hope that was the...[699.43][699.43](audience applauding) I hope that was one of the easiest elections, it certainly was the cheapest one, I think, you've ever run. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for the honor of serving as your Council President. I accept this position today with purpose. Our purpose, colleagues, is reflected in the very firmament of this building, where our predecessors in 1928 laid a cornerstone that was filled with sand from every county and water from every mission in California. It was a building that Jose Weezer's grandfather helped build, at a time when Tom Labange's grandfather was a Los Angeles police officer, when some of our ancestors hadn't yet arrived on these shores, and others were battling Jim Crow racism to try to get us where we are today. We all come here from very many different places, and our professional backgrounds are diverse and wide-ranging, and we represent very different parts of this city, but we serve one people. And just as we take an oath to serve the people of Los Angeles and this city, I promise to you today to do everything in my power to serve you over the next two years. Each of us around this horseshoe is blessed. If you look around us, we serve the most open, vibrant, and robust legislative body probably anywhere in this nation. In a nation where people feel increasingly isolated from their government and from their elected officials, we run counter to that. People come to Council Chambers to share their joy, their anger, their tragedies, and their hopes with this body, and in turn, with an entire city. The challenges this city faces and the successes that we can realize are enough to inspire this world. There's no city on earth exactly like ours, the mosaic neighborhoods with our newest inhabitants, a strong and always-evolving economy, the creative capital of the world. It's against this backdrop, my colleagues, that our duty is to enable all of the people to realize a good life, an affordable place to call home, a safe neighborhood with good schools, clean and safe water and air, an opportunity to work hard and to support your family. We face serious issues around this horseshoe that have real consequences for people's lives, but this Council, you, have the power to confront and to resolve these issues, and to leave our mark on this great city. Think about what we're doing. For instance, we are literally changing the course of a river. We're making communities safer, and creating new opportunities for our young people. We're balancing our city's budget while protecting our vital city services. We're building new busways and rail lines, cleaning our waterways, and preserving more of our resources. We're expanding shelter beds and building more units of housing than we've seen in decades, and as Council members, we're responding to crisis, whether it's in the wake of a neighborhood shooting, or as fires ravage our city's hills. We have shown we have the power, and we have the purpose, to lead. But the Council leadership does not reside in me, or even in myself, in the President Pro Tem and the Assistant President Pro Tem. The leadership of this Council resides in fifteen individuals around this horseshoe. In fact, the thing that makes this body great is not any one of us, but it is the collective wisdom, experience, and passion of all of us. If you look at the seat next to you, the next great idea for moving this city forward is gonna come from that person. So, over the next two years, let us not just lead, but let us listen. Truly, let us listen to each other. Let us listen to our constituents, and let us listen to this great city. Thank you for electing me to lead this body for the next two years. Today, we begin the ninety-ninth session of the Los Angeles City Council, and we are the inheritors of a proud tradition stretching all the way back to the Ayuntamiento, the original town council that met in this town in 1812. But we're also the inheritors of a great story, the growth and the evolution of one of the greatest cities ever in human history. So today, as we begin this ninety-ninth session, in the city's 226th year, let us write a proud chapter in that history. Thank you very much.[973.73][973.73](audience applauding) Thank you.[982.01][982.01](audience applauding) And, Ms. Gruel, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, and I will be brief, so we can get down to the city's business in the ninety-ninth year of our Council session, and I want to thank my colleagues for the faith that you have given me and entrusted to me as the President Pro Tem during the last two years. It really has been an honor to serve in that role, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti for his leadership. A lot of people think being President or President Pro Tem of the Council is just fun. It's a tough job, and I want to thank you for your leadership, and the fact that you outlined many of the accomplishments that we've had in the last few years. I think that we have one of the most uniquely qualified and talented body here that we've had in a long time, with the experience of so many individuals here, in the long and illustrious history. Each of us comes with our own backgrounds, experiences, and commitments to public service. We have several individuals who have dedicated their life to public safety, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Parks, who have that leadership, to Mr. Weezer and his relationship and understanding of the educational system, to Mr. Reyes and his planning issues, and Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Hahn, their community activism that they have, and experienced elected officials with Mr. Wesson and Mr. Alec, and Mr. Cardness, and Ms. Perry, who we've, I think, probably between, and Mr. Labange have been, and Mr. Smith, I guess, long time within the city of Los Angeles. He's pointing to Labange as the one who's had the longest. Is that true? Yes, okay.[1096.42][1096.42](audience laughing) It's a good thing, but what this body represents is really what Los Angeles represents, the diversity of our city, the importance of doing the small things, dealing with the issues that matter most to our constituency. And so, we all chose Los Angeles as our home because of its hope and opportunities that are here. And as I stand here today, four years ago tomorrow, you all celebrated with me, this is a family, my son's birth, and, which was an exciting time. We thought maybe it happened on the day, you know, four years ago, on July 1st, when we were sworn in, those of us, on the even-numbered Council members. But I think that this has become not only a Council that is for the people, but we spend a lot of time together, and it's a family. And I want to recognize all of the staffs that are here from not only the Council offices, but the city departments, who make this city work, and that's what we're here to do. And yes, let's give them a round of applause.[1160.83][1160.83](audience applauding) So, together, we will make this a city where we can work and play and enjoy the fruits of our labor, and most importantly, to serve the people. So, thank you very much for entrusting me as President Pro Tem, and let's get to work. Thank you.[1177.58][1177.58](audience applauding)
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel, and let me thank my own staff, who's worked very, very hard, and my partner, Amy Wakeland, who's with us as well, trying to sneak out, I think, probably, but thank you very much for your support of me over the last couple of years. And with that, let's go through the first items in the agenda, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Zine seconds without objection. That will be approved. Next order of business.
Commended to your resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection. Those resolutions will be approved unanimously.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comments at this time?
Let's run through the agenda. We'll come back for public comment right after.
On the regular agenda, items one through six are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing.
Okay. Colleagues, one through six, anybody wishing to call those special? If not, we will go ahead. These are to continue or to go ahead and vote on them?
This is actually the ordinance confirming this assessment.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item seven is a street lighting district item, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing in ordinance to July 24th.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and continue the ordinance, open that public hearing till the 24th of this month. Next item, please.
Item eight is a street vacation item in Council District 12, notice for public hearing.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special, number eight? Seeing not, there's no public card on that, so we'll open and close the public hearing, and if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items nine through forty-one are items which public hearings have been held. Items eighteen through twenty-three are commission reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commission reappointments on the desk. We have the balance of nine through forty-one, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call special? Mr. Rosendahl?
Thirty-seven, please.
Thirty-seven for Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weezer?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three for Mr. Weezer. Any other specials, colleagues? Once, twice? Go ahead, let's open the roll and the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next, twenty-seven and thirty-four, forthwith without objection. Thank you. Next items?
Items forty-two through sixty-one are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Item forty-two is also a commission reappointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that commission reappointment on the desk, number forty-two. And do we have cards on any of these items? I see fifty-four.
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue item fifty-two to July 13th.
Okay, till the 13th of this month, if there's no objection, item fifty-two. Mr. Parks? Fifty-six and fifty-seven for Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith?
Forty-eight.
Sorry, forty-eight for Mr. Smith. And we have some cards on fifty-four. We have cards, so we'll call that special, and...
There are cards also on forty-three and forty-six.
Forty-six and forty-three. All right.
And sixty.
And on sixty, okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Sixty-four, we're not quite at yet, but we do have cards on that one, and we will come to that in a second. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, I understand there's an amending motion in the works on item fifty-nine. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Sure, let's hold fifty-nine for an amendment as well. Thank you. We're ready with the balance? Go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item sixty-two is the closed session item, and the city attorney is requesting to continue that to July 25th.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll continue that till July 25th. Item number sixty-two, so ordered. Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, items sixty-three and sixty-four are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and I understand there's a substitute motion in the works for item sixty-four.
Okay, and there's cards in the public on that, too, so we'll call that special. Sixty-three, Mr. Smith?
Remand sixty-three to committee.
Okay.
IGR.
There's no objection. We'll send sixty-three back to committee. Okay. Does that finish the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
That would take care of the items called special. That would take you back to public comment.
Okay. I'd like to now move to public comment, starting with Chuck Tennant.
Eric, Eric, could you call him?
Okay, we'll wait on Mr. Tennant. Chris Mattson is our next speaker for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chris Mattson. My husband worked for the Los Angeles City Fire Department for more than thirty years. We have a son on the job. I am here to comment on your participation in the L.A. Pride Festival last month. First, I would like to say that it is right to support events that promote the fundamental dignity of every human person, and to condemn unjust discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. But last month's Gay Pride Festival fell short of that, and in fact, promoted the dehumanization of persons. As you know, the parade ended at the festival grounds that featured entertainment pavilions, including the children's garden for the youngest attendees, and Erotic City for others. Many of you participated in the parade, and some of you rode on the vintage City of Los Angeles fire truck en route to the festival grounds. The schedule and press release for the parade and entertainment are still available for viewing by all ages on L.A. Pride's website at www.lapride.org. Visitors are not forewarned about the obscene content and links to pornographic websites. The schedule for Erotic City lists, quote, bondage, sadomasochism, rope for sex, spanking for pleasure, mummification, bound for pleasure, flogging, electricity, erotic hot wax, sex on fire, flaming faggots, and ninety-nine cent sex store toys. The press release says, quote, "Men will strut their stuff in the wet underwear contest. Don't miss the dildo contest. Try things you fantasized about: the knife drawn against your neck, a leather hood depriving you of your senses." Clearly, L.A. Pride does not promote the fundamental dignity of any person, whether heterosexual, homosexual, bisexual, or transgender.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Why?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt.
Good morning, City Council. I'm back again. I'd like to welcome out loud, and I'd like to welcome Eric Garcetti as President. We came down here about a year and a half ago regarding a civil rights violation, and I'm here to speak up on it. The forty-two fifteen blatantly violated people's civil rights. I was arrested twenty-four times, and around forty-two fifteen disturbances and everything. But I come to promote what the judge said in his transcript. If you read the preliminary injunction transcript, he said it best, there is nothing that you can do but leave Venice Beach to its artists and its people to run Venice Beach, not to the police, not to Parks and Recreation, but to leave Venice Beach as it is. Now, I was looking through the agenda. They said something about the C-L-A or something, reviewing tax purposes and things like that. They should really be reviewing, giving the people on Venice Beach tax breaks as far as employing themselves, as far as paying their health insurance and things like that, not trying to go after somebody that make less than ten or twelve thousand dollars a year, and that stays out of trouble through community-based policing. If you have a job, then you're not in trouble. Let me repeat this. We are spending our resources and angling our resources at the wrong thing instead of putting these people to work, but as a result, it ended up in a federal lawsuit. The federal judge, if you read what he says, you will totally understand what the ordinance should be, and if you need a copy, please see me, because I am promoting what Judge Dean Pragerson said. Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. After that will be George Wilks.
Yes, good morning, Los Angeles City Council. My name's Zuma Dog, and speaking of city business, under your jurisdiction, I'll be appearing on the Kevin James Show on AM 870 KRLA in studio this Friday at nine to eleven PM. If you're out of town, online at 870 KRLA. It'll be my first in-studio appearance, the effectiveness of Zuma Dog-
Mr. Dog, if you could address city business, thank you.
...on you cutting me. Right now, I'd like to congratulate Eric Garcetti. It's been nothing but combat on this between the two of us, First Amendment challenges, and there's nobody I'd rather have there. Do not, you know, I like to come here, and so I waited for this day. I was hoping they'd vote him out, but when it finally came to, and I said, "No, don't vote him out. He's the right guy for this. It's not about Eric. What do you do about a guy like me?" I don't know. One time, a radio talk show host asked me, "What would I do about myself?" I said, "I'd probably jump over the podium and beat the crap out of the guy," so I know what you're going through. And I, you know, I just had a jury trial this last week where I was arrested here in chambers, and I realized, I didn't realize what a factor I was. I came here on Friday and gave a speech, and after I went back for my trial, the city attorney says we've got three to five more witnesses and one to testify against- attorney says we've got three to five more witnesses who want to testify against you, Zuma Dogg. Keep going back for public comment. Who knows who else you're gonna end up pissing off? And the big thing they were saying was, you show up. Here's the city attorney saying, what do you say about a guy who shows up day after day after day, speaking on items? I'd say, thank you that there's some loser with no life that is able to come here and speak on all these issues for other people. And I've never come here representing my own point. I've never, Michael Hunt brought me down here over Venice, Pandora's Box. I've never come down here and represented my own personal point of view as these peoples here. Now, sometimes my point of view is represented, but something I'd like to say right now, a lot of people don't want me to do this, but there's somebody, he has to yield some time. I hope I could yield some time right now. My name's Dave, and I have been trapped inside. I came in here over some issues, and I've been held hostage by Zuma Dogg, this mean guy, and I'm trying to break the trap. I'm gonna try to honor the spirit in which you'd like me to, even though I can go much further. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Chuck Tenon, is he ready? No? Mr. Tenon? If not, George Wilks was our next speaker? Oh, he is, I'm sorry. Mr. Wilks, Mr. Tenon is gonna take his prerogative, so Mr. Wilks will be second. I'm sorry. If you'd just sit tight, and then Mr. Tenon will be our next speaker.
No?
Please, Mr. Tenon.
Well, first of all, congratulations, Mr. Garcetti. Thumbs up. I think, boy, what a good move there. We're in good hands. I was gonna speak about something different, but I'm gonna hold back on that. I did wanna say, the L.A. Housing Department had a program to help people get into affordable housing. And in April, they were given $6 million, and in a month, it was gone, and there were a lot of people that were gonna lose out on their dreams. And I went to the Housing Committee, Herb Wesson, who heads that, and I know Eric, you're on that, and they put a motion through, and the L.A. Housing Department got $5 million to help the people that were on the waiting list like myself. And it proves a point that motions can go through, and dreams can come true, and you can get things done with the city if you go after it. And they introduced a motion. Three weeks later, there was $5 million there, so it can be done, and it's the people like the Herb Wessons, the Eric Garcettys, the Jan Perrys, and the Tony Cardenas that they gave the opportunity for someone to speak, and they listened, and they acted on it. And now, it's amazing how living testimony, the Housing Department, everyone is happy, and yet it's keeping alive a program that helps people in the areas of affordable housing in this city. I think that's a great thing, and I think the other thing is, what was displayed there is that in every council district, even though they have a responsibility and they're a public servant to their constituents, but that Housing Committee and the council members on that opened their doors to me, and I don't even live in their council district, and they heard me, and they helped me, and they helped a lot of other people, which means city council people opened their doors to everyone, and God bless them for that. I think that's a great thing in running this city.
Thank you, Mr. Tenon. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Wilks, my apologies. And after that will be Jeff Marlet. Good morning, Mr. Wilks.
The city attorney's office in the Paris Hilton case was a party to a racially discriminatory prosecution that denied equal protection under the law. A Hispanic celebrity, Michelle Rodriguez, spent some four hours and 20 minutes at the Linwood Jail after being sentenced to 60 days for a probation violation for being convicted of driving under the influence. Earlier, she had been convicted of hit-and-run, drunken driving, and driving with a suspended license. The city attorney's office knew about her early release, four spokesperson for that office commented on it. The city attorney made an energetic effort to put Paris Hilton, a white celebrity, back into jail, but I've heard nothing about his taking any action to rejail the Hispanic celebrity who did less than half a day in jail. Consider this as to why Paris Hilton was mistreated as she was. Step one, start giving white celebrities harsher sentences than non-white celebrities. Step two, gain public approval for this, including among white people playing upon their envy. Step three, extend that unequal protection under law to white people in general. This must stop now. The city council should, insofar as it can, remove the autonomy of the city attorney's office, which hasn't shown a sense of justice in this matter, and which must not be allowed to further deny constitutional protection. Ironically, though, Paris Hilton, who is white, was denied equal protection under the law as the Constitution requires. White people wrote the Constitution. Non-Jews of European descent are of the lost tribes of Israel, and they, and European heritage Jews, I have called Caucasians, as both groups are Caucasians of European background. Such, though generally not as during World War II, are unbeknownst to most people, being offered up as sacrifices through their suffering as payment for favors from discarnate entities. Those who engage in such should be scrutinized, and Caucasians should no longer allow themselves to be sacrificed for others' desire for power. The destruction of the Roman Empire was caused by the persecution of the tribes of Israel and shouldn't be repeated.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeff Marlet. After that will be Arnold Sacks. Good morning.
How you doing? I guess I come to speak today on, there's a law in the city that citizens cannot carry weapons on themselves, guns or so on, and I think this goes against nature. In natural world, every animal has to defend itself, but in the systems of the human systems, they wanna protect you. But I don't think they have the logistic, the manpower to protect each citizen. So we must allow the citizens to be able to protect themselves against those people that operate outside the law. So I remember, it was four or five years ago, Edward James Olmos applied for a concealed carry permit when he was given a death threat by mafia gang members, and he was denied. But Edward James Olmos is an actor, and he's not gonna be a threat to anybody. He's trying to protect himself, but he was denied by whomever, the powers that be. So you guys have the power here perhaps to change that and overturn that law or do some kind of a legislation. That's why I'm here to recommend that, because I think the law goes against nature. And there it is. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After Arnold Sacks, we'll be going out to Van Nuys for Donna Perman and Sharon Brewer. And then we'll come back here to council chambers. Felicia Ford will be our fourth speaker after that. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning. Congratulations, Mr. President, on your new, on your reappointment to your position. Very quickly, just one city item. Unfortunately, I missed the last Transportation Committee meeting, and they had an item about the Wilshire bus only lane. I was wondering, what's the status of the Olympic Pico traffic configuration? I believe that Mr. Wesson wanted to have some meetings with his constituents regarding that issue. And then, one other thing I'd like to talk about is, I'd like to congratulate the United States government for its implementation of the surge in the Middle East. According to an article, Afghanistan opium production is the highest ever. Its production rose by 50% in 2006 to 92% of the world's total, and 600 square miles are now devoted to opium cultivation, which means eventually, within this year, maybe the beginning of next year, we'll probably have a surge in the production of heroin, which means we'll have a surge in the production of heroin users. Maybe the city council ought to start making plans to get out in front of this, instead of trailing the crack epidemic that we suffered through in the early 80s, the mid-80s, and the early 90s, and get out in front before we have a problem with heroin overdoses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. And Mr. Labange indicated, if you want answers to that first question, we can be able to assist you right over there at the ropes. Thank you very much, and we'll go out to Van Nuys next, to Donna Perman and Sharon Brewer. Ms. Perman, good morning.
Okay, yeah, good morning. Congratulations, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Gruel. I'm really happy about the appointment. Anyway, I'm speaking from Van Nuys chamber, like I've been doing almost every Tuesday. I'm here to stand, Zuma Dogg, but Sharon was not the only representative in Van Nuys that day. I was there, too. United we stand, divided we fall. Speaking in front of the city council doesn't come easy to me. I feel very nervous. I have to write everything down, and I can't think straight, and I have to talk fast. But I come to speak against the CRA and keep the city council honest. Speaking of the CRA, our California Destruction Agency, I'm out to sort everything that is unique, small, and neighborly. I'm glad Marion Fogler and Zuma Dogg come to city council, the Warren people, about big development and CRA in words I can't articulate. Thanks for Zuma Dogg, for ZumaTimes.com on it, what a website. I'm thankful for Sharon Brewer and her input, but more people should come to Van Nuys and downtown to tell the city council how you feel. I admire Councilman Rosendall for his honesty about his sexuality with a quiet way of saying that is part of who he is. I'm glad you have CRA in your district, but I don't agree when you spoke about Prop H. You still want, the city council still wants a simple majority for, you can brainwash a simple majority into voting for horrible bonds that raises rents and property taxes. And you're double-dipping on the trash fee. CRA should be disbanded. They wanna call everything blight so they can justify their action of eminent domain and building skyscrapers and huge metrocities. I noticed last Wednesday before quorum, Councilman Rosendall and Councilman Garcetti were acting a little cozy. I laughed out loud, you made my day, I mean, in a nice way. I want you to stop big development and Grand Avenue projects and the CRA and give our home, hard-working city employees a much-needed raise, but of course, you already get a huge raise every year, slightly approved by our misfamed voters, and I don't want any of you councilmen to get a third term. Two's enough, get a real job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Congratulations. Sharon Brewer, Encino Neighborhood Council, June 28th election. Fact number one, still no response to June 8th public records request for Encino Dunn approved 2007 election procedures. Two, still no written response from Dunn regarding why Dunn allowed Encino's election to go forward. Carol Thorp handed my June 28th, '07 email regarding this matter to Arturo Pena. Email said, Arturo, please see below and draft a reply. I'm about to lose patience with her. Thanks, CBT. Dunn allowing, three, Dunn allowing Encino's election was a violation of the NC election procedures approved by city council on January 25th, 2005. Lake Balboa, July 4th, public safety issues. I sent an email to the Office of Public Safety and Park Rangers asking if there were any plans in the works to deal with the traffic problems at Lake Balboa on the 4th. OPS response was that they are max deployed for the 4th, also that the fireworks shows at Hanson Dam and Warner Park most likely will be a priority. I still haven't heard from the Park Rangers regarding any coverage for Lake Balboa. It is not fair that the city continues to ignore the ongoing public safety issues at Lake Balboa. Is it going to take someone getting seriously hurt and suing the city before Lake Balboa's safety issues will be addressed? On Sunday, June 24th, I watched a woman pull her car through an opening where there were two or three missing white poles and backed down on the bike path so that she could park inside the white poles but closer to where she needed to go. I have pictures, a picture of the car, including the license plate number, completely on the bike path. These issues with parking on the bike path need to be addressed. Recreation of parks still has not replaced any of the 19 missing white poles, and it's going to end up causing a major problem with people's safety if they don't address the issue. Again, something needs to be done about the safety at Lake Balboa. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Felicia Ford will be our next speaker. Good morning, Ms. Ford. And Oscar Johnson will follow. Nice to see you.
Congratulations, Mr. Garcetti and Cindy Gruel. You come with class, and you certainly have represented your council and the City of Los Angeles very well. I'd like to speak on the homeless issue today. Unfortunately, we are picking and choosing over people that need our help the most, and that's the homeless. They should not have to continue for such a long time to push their lives in a basket. I have a plan to help a wide range of them, but I'm going to need assistance in doing that. I funded a lot of money to help the Woodlawn Cemetery family members, and for those that don't know what that means, those were the cemetery family members where their loved ones were dug up and thrown into the trash can. I don't like to remind individuals of that, but that is what the situation was. However, I spent my own money and my own time. I cannot fund this, but I do have a great plan that will get all of the homeless off of the street and to give them the assistance that they need. Many are disabled mentally. They have to be separated from the ones that are just becoming homeless or becoming homeless, but they're not more or less destitute with illnesses. So I asked the city council to work with me, along with the other surrounding cities, to help with this serious problem, because it's a plague that has overwhelmed us. It used to be a time that the generation that I was raised by, the children ate first before mom and daddy, and clothing went along with that. So I asked us to come and help them, and I'll do my best that I can. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ford. Appreciate your comments today. Oscar Johnson is our final speaker for general public comment. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Congratulations. But anyway, my name is Oscar Johnson. I was speaking as proactive members, you know, for the homeless in Los Angeles, and I see where America gets so many hundreds of millions of dollars every year, and they spend not any of it on the homeless, and Skid Row especially, you know, it's no place for women and children. And I still see as we go in this 21st century that we are African-American, we still face racism in our, through our political systems, racism through our people that are supposed to represent us, and we are in need of political reform in this country. But anyway, what I'm speaking about, we have liquor store changes in Los Angeles. I spoke with some commission, they told, said they have closed down some liquor stores, but I'm demanding, and a few other people, said we want all liquor stores closed down in Los Angeles, because they are taking down our community, though, and we are too poor. We can't spend to that type of luxury any longer. But anyway, in this 23rd century, 21st century, a young man walking through Wilmington, California, he get killed because he has the wrong color clothes on. And our mayor have got more money for the bus rides to go up, but we still have poor service on our buses. The bus broke down in Wilmington, a young man walked, and he walked through the wrong neighborhood, and he got shot in his head. And this is the kind of people we got to represent us. And we see as, we have a few African-American city councilmen, but it seems as though we always get questions on the bottom and nothing at all, and we see how Ms. Jane Perry, she have the worst district in Los Angeles, and that's Skid Row. And year after year, it has deteriorated, deteriorates, nothing to be did about it, yet it still will have millions of dollars keep coming in to fight gangs, keep coming in to help the homeless, and the only thing the politician is helping is helping themselves. They not really connected with us, they not really represent us, because I see where we have the E, R, F, the R E P thing come around for the bides, you know? But who gets the bides? The one who support the politician. The politician support the one that support them. If you not affiliated with the politician, we don't have any support, and we neglect through the resources that is spread equally in our community.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That completes our general public comment. First order of business.
Item 18 is the appointment of Mr. James Zaffris to the Industrial Development Authority.
Thank you. If we can ask the nominee to come forward, and like to recognize the chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee for Mr. Zaffris's nomination to the Industrial Development Authority, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise to request that we vote unanimously to appoint James to this committee. We had a very interesting debate in committee this morning. The debate was led by our newly re-elected president. I don't know if our newly re-elected president will take the same line of questioning that he took this morning, Ms. Perry, and I hope that he will not. But the point is that this is an individual that is committed to serve, that has the experience, the track record. I want to say back in 1990 began public service with the City of Los Angeles, did a fine job, and an individual who was willing to put aside some of the things that he could do in his personal life to help serve the greatest city on the planet. So I would request that all members vote unanimously for this confirmation of this appointment, and again, thank you for your desire to serve again, James.
Thank you, and we will not be repeating the line of questions in committee. Rest assured. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I just want to rise, Mr. Zaffris is one of the great citizens of Los Angeles. His daughter is on the Youth Advisory Council, the advent of that is the Children, Youth, and Family Council. He's very involved in the industrial community of Los Angeles. He was a, his father was a great friend of John Farrell, that's what I really want to to say. Ernie Zaffris, your late father, was one of the greatest men who worked in this city, was responsible for developing much of the industrial area for produce and the melons, and I just am proud to stand up as a friend and Jim Zaffris and your family for many, many years. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Weston, I join with your committee in urging an I vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other comments. Oh, Mr. Rosendahl.
All right, I know we go rather quickly. Um, tell me why you want to be on this commission again. What you see the value of this commission? What's your vision of this?
My vision is being a part of something that's going to help the city of Los Angeles in terms of, um, improving the economy, creating jobs, and doing it in a responsible fashion. And it's just, it's an honor for me to serve in that capacity.
And saying that, um, you saw that Santa Monica got the, the rap in, in the Business Journal as the most difficult city, where we've been the one before that, uh, and some have talked about the way we've worked on some of our taxes, streamlining things, one, stop shopping. What are some of the things you want to accomplish in this job?
Well, you know, I really don't have any lofty goals and objectives right now, but I, I agree with you that I, um, bureaucracies can be quite intimidating at times and difficult to navigate those waters when you're trying to establish businesses, and to sort of have a layup on between the two that would encourage and help, um, establishing business, I think it's just vital.
Um, when you look at the mission statement of this commission, describe it to us, those who don't know what it is.
Um, I don't have the mission statement memorized, but in essence, it is a conduit, if you will, to facilitate, um, funding between private industry and to help establish business. And there's formulas that the financial assistance is given with a, a relationship to jobs being created. So in that regard, I think it's, it's quite equitable, and I think it's a, it's a brilliant program.
And jobs being created, do you take a look at this prevention and intervention strategy of gangs, opportunities for apprenticeship programs, training programs, getting jobs for people at risk? Do you see that as part of your, your vision?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the exact definition of the jobs being created are, but, uh, there are definite requirements and constraints with respect to the type of jobs that are indeed being created.
Uh-huh. Well, we look forward to your leadership on that. You know, we talk about gangs and we put 168 million at the gang issue. The best way to deal with gangs, frankly, is education and jobs, which is intervention and prevention. And we look forward to you providing some of that leadership, where we want to create jobs, more business, industrialization in our city. Think about those people that could use that opportunity to get them out of trouble.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Now, Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 19 is the reappointment of Ms. Sharon Lowe to the East Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
Is Sharon here? Oh, there she is. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, um, let my colleagues know that I had the pleasure of interviewing Ms. Lowe in committee, and I stand to support her. I believe we have a rare opportunity to work with an individual who brings strong community advocacy as well as a keen legal skill set to address our planning issues, especially in the area that will be covered by this commission. So I stand to support Ms. Sharon Lowe. Perhaps, Ms. Lowe, if you'd like to just share with us, um, one of your most challenging experiences as commissioner, knowing that it's a reappointment, uh, and just speak to our, can I say this, our approach in dealing with, with our housing challenge.
Um, well, first of all, it's been an honor for the past, uh, since November of 2005 for my initial appointment to serve with my fellow commissioners on the East Area Planning Commission. Councilmember, as you well know, the East Area covers the Council District One, Council District 13, and Council District 14, where we have a high concentration of, um, non-English-speaking immigrant-based communities, very diverse, and we have very little open space that we're trying to protect and preserve. Together, we, at the same time, we have to balance our needs for economic revitalization and preservation of our housing, something, you know, that is very, is very dear to my heart. And while the council was struggling this past year for several of your sessions, and several of the committees were addressing the issues as to the condo conversions, um, I think one of the most difficult, but issues that came before us most comprehensive was one which took place in Council District 13, and I think that's probably going to be our first case that's going to come before us on a condo conversion. And it's addressing some of the issues of cumulative impacts that the council itself grappled with, and we try to balance, and I think what we looked to was the letter of the law. We looked at the code, we were very specific. I hope we set forth a protocol for future review of such actions and to give some guidance to planning staff. We know it was difficult at that time for them to struggle themselves because interpret, these cases have pretty much gone forward without any true analysis. And yes, we did send it back, we did, um, ask that they look at the cumulative impacts when there is a high vacancy rate. And it was really important because the code does specify, but there is confusion within the code as well. And we do know that the planning department under the leadership of our current director, Gail Goldberg, is making some major strides forwards for change, and I think that's what we're looking for, to work cooperatively with all segments of the community. The neighbors who are immediately impacted, the developers. At the same time, we had another project come forward where we had a developer come forward, um, on an infill development, which as you well know is very difficult to do. And that developer, I think, set a precedent by reaching out to the community and working hand in hand and getting their input and balancing their project and getting the support of the, those who are immediately impacted as well as working with the council office. So when we all work together, I think we get a better city. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to do that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lowe, for that comprehensive response. Uh, you covered a lot of area there, and I'd like to encourage an I vote for my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thanks, Sharon, for your, um, leadership and experience on the commission. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations. Next item.
Item 20 is the reappointment of Ms. Eleanor Williams to the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners.
Ms. Williams, we appreciate your willingness to continue, um, as a commissioner. It's a very important commission for our city, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I think we're not even going to have to ask you questions because you're so good. So, uh, Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to you on your reelection as pro-Talm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 21 is the reappointment of Mr. Matt Epstein to the South Valley Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Epstein. So although I'm at the chair here, I will ask you a question. This is, how, how long have you been on the commission now?
Um, a year this time, and then I was on...
A year? Okay.
A little under a year, yeah. And then I was on before, under Richard Rudin.
Right. Anything you'd like to share with us as, uh, some of the experience and the issues in the South Valley?
Um, no, not unless you have any specific questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know the issues for us in the South Valley are traffic related to development and the balance between single-family and multifamily, and I know a lot of the issues that you have dealt with. I do appreciate your, not to put you on the spot, but thank you for your commitment. It is a, it is a time, uh, you know, commitment that you're putting forward for those meetings on Thursday. I think it's Thursday afternoons that take place, and so we just thank you. You are an active community individual in the Sherman Oaks and in Studio City, and really know the issues that are affecting those neighborhoods and communities, and an excellent representative there. So I just wanted to say thank you for your, for your term, and glad you're willing to serve again. And Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Mr. Epstein, how are you?
Good.
What's the toughest thing about your role as a commissioner?
Uh, the toughest thing is, um, is, is just making sure that we hear all the facts, and, um, it's a delicate balance between the community and developers, which is, which is most of our cases. Um, and it's, it's interesting, this, this run, uh, this term has been a lot easier working with, and I see, I look forward to a lot of, uh, good movements with Gail Goldberg. Uh, we've been working on, and we're actually crafting, uh, a joint letter between the North Valley Commission and our South Valley Commission to work with her office to, uh, to streamline some of the, the policy issues. But as far as the toughest, uh, I, every, every case that kind of stands on its own.
Right. And do you think there should be maybe a division, there'd be a Southwest Valley, Southeast Valley, Northwest Valley? I mean, how, what's your workload?
Um, that's a great question. Um, that's a great question. You know, the, the jurisdictional lines, we go basically from Roscoe to the south of, a mile south of Mulholland. And the east and the west are, are two completely different, um, different neighborhoods, like the north and the South Valley. I, I would, I would think that that would be a very interesting opportunity. It would certainly cut our caseload down quite a bit.
Is it, is it overwhelming? And, and I know I say overwhelming because you're doing your job, but does it, you think it needs to be looked at?
You know what? It, it, no, it's not overwhelming. I mean, there are cases that we go into, you know, seven, eight hours into, into, you know, 10, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock. We had one, one issue and we had six or seven agenda items. And we also have Gordon Merly on, and he is very thorough with his questions, which is, we're very fortunate for. But, yeah, it would be something to look at, absolutely. I don't know, I don't know how the charter actually, I don't know how it would...
Right. We could ask the CLA to look at that and give us a little report, but I just want us to know your feel, because I sometimes thought that would be something to look at, to be able to focus more. Planning, and as Ms. Gruel said, transportation is a key now as you look to planning on issues. People don't want absolutely anything done, but then you have property owned by someone, and now they're exercising their right to develop it.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, but, you know, I'll tell you, some, some also, you know, you have the city planning commission that hears the, the larger cases.
Right.
And, you know, I, I'll tell you, sometimes it might not be a bad idea to have a, a, a valley commission, APC, when it, when it's, when there's an issue that is affecting the valley, a, a larger valley issue, but not large enough to actually go to, to, to the city planning commission. So there's, there are absolutely...
Something to look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. I'm going to look at that and, uh, share with others, and we'll see what comes.
Great.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Epstein.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It's hard to, I mean, for the period of time that you've been here, which is at least for an hour, uh, can we, do we have any guarantee that no new Matt Epstein signs have gone up along Valley Vista? You've got a capable staff out there putting them up while you're here. Um, you're, you're just a very, very accomplished person, uh, both professionally and in the community, and, uh, I tried to make a few jokes at Plum, but I won't make any more here today. I'm really delighted that you're going to continue to service as a commissioner. You've done an excellent job, and I know you're going to continue to do an excellent job, and, uh, I know a lot of folks in the community really respect you for how much time you put into public service, and especially for what you're doing in this position, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, Matt. Look forward to seeing you again. Next item.
Item 22 is the reappointment of Ms. Glenda Martinez to the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
We will give you the same opportunity we afforded to, uh, Mr. Epstein, if there's anything you want to share with us about your experience on the commission and appointment?
Uh, I was appointed to the West LA Area Planning Commission in August of last year, and, um, it has been a very exciting and, and difficult experience. Um, in the West LA area, we are dealing with the issue of condo conversions and, um, the lack of affordable housing. And that has been a big issue for our commission, balancing the needs of development with the needs of the community and, and following the restraints we have under the code.
Well, thank you, and I think that is, uh, probably the heart and soul over there, the challenges that are facing, and thank you for, uh, serving. Um, and so, Madam Clerk, if you would, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Next item.
Item 23 is the appointment of Ms. Mia Lehr to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Like to acknowledge Mr. Labange.
Much. Mia Lehr, as we, uh, some of us may know, has done a lot of great work as an architect, uh, throughout, you know, landscape architect, uh, throughout, uh, projects throughout the city of Los Angeles. I'm proud she is married to the 1970 class president of John Marshall High, Michael Lehr, also an architect as well, a wonderful family, and they live in the historic home in the Los Feliz district. Mia, tell me your passion, because I know your passion, but I want people to hear it.
Okay. Well, first of all, I have to say that, um, this is an awesome city council, uh, group here, and you really sense the passion, and, um, I've sensed it for the last few years. Um, I, I, um, my life has come full circle as, um, when Mr. Labange's grandfather, Mr. Weisar's grandfather, were in Los Angeles doing great work, my family was in El Salvador, um, building up a business. And my life has come full circle as I ended up in Los Angeles with, uh, more Salvadorians than actually San Salvador can count on. Um, and, uh, I love the city. I love working with people. I think that, um, I am trained, um, as an urban planner, landscape planner, uh, that I can, uh, bring a lot to the city and to the community and help them realize some of their dreams, um, in making it a better place. And what I hope on the commission is that as we deal with issues related to, um, HBOZs or a particular, uh, other opportunities, uh, of cultural heritage, that I'll be able to really bring forward the sense of place that I think Los Angeles for a long time has tended to erase and that we need to sort of respect and bring forward, um, as part of our work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I recommend a strong I vote.
Strong I vote. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Zine, and followed by Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to support Ms. Lehr. I think she's being rather modest. Uh, she's played a tremendous role in our city and how it has evolved. Her position as one of the pillars of the Allee River Master Plan has brought us to a different level of understanding of how we can integrate the communities that have a history of being overlooked, a history of being neglected, and bringing back new elements of vitality, a new sense of character, and how we can not only bring the river back to life, but extend that life into our communities as we create new systems of water treatment, new systems of how we establish our greening of our streetways, looking at our parking in such a way where we can begin to eliminate those surfaces to the degree that we can create permeable surfaces, to rejuvenate our aquifers. The system is such that with her leadership and guidance, we can look at our environment with a whole new perspective. So I want to thank you, Ms. Lehr, for all that you've done, the education that's needed in a multilingual, multicultural city. It is a pleasure to hear you speak Spanish, English, hang tough with those who are of the professional stature, as well as hanging tough with the person who is our everyday individual who is surviving in our streets of Los Angeles. So thank you for your contribution and your expertise.
Gracias.
I urge an I vote.
Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations, Mia. I just wanted to rise, uh, I've had the great fortune of working with Ms. Lehr on a number of, of civic projects, and I can't think of anybody who does a better job, both on the professionalism of the content of, of what we do to green the city and to make it more beautiful, but also in the process, which says a lot, because to be a successful commissioner, you have to understand, I think, that political process that we all engage in here and which we do in our commissions. Um, and so you have that right combination of, I think, style and politics to bring it together, and you have my full support, so felicidades, and I know that your, your bilingualism will help as well in what we do, but we look forward to you representing not only the region that we both work and live in, but for this entire city, so...
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to congratulate you. We worked well together when we had the school district and... We worked well together when we had the school district, and I think you've been a lot of knowledge and experience to this commission, and I look forward to working with you on moving to also, the city is undertaking a survey of what should we preserve and potentially historic designations throughout the city. And I think you have a lot to add to that, because you know the whole city very well. So congratulations and thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Buenas dias.
Are you familiar at all with the Lincoln Place business over there, where 400 units were declared cultural and historic by a state commission?
Lincoln Place?
That's in my district, the 11th district.
Yes, of course, I'm familiar with it. Yes.
What I'd like you to do on the commission is take a deep breath and take a look at what's going on at Lincoln Place. I met with AMCO, which is the group that threw out my tenants, which I'll never forget, frankly. I'm not big on buildings, I'm big on people. It looks like the buildings are being preserved, but the people have been thrown out. But I'd like you to take fresh eyes and take a look at the, what appears to be 400 units that are gonna be preserved. I want to know how this impacts what we need to do in terms of both space and people. There's another subject that you're gonna look at called the Dutton Bookstore, which is on San Vicente.
Right.
I'd like your impression of what that means, how does that work into what makes sense or not makes sense, if it is cultural, historic, should be preserved. But once again, the building might be preserved, but the bookstore not necessarily will be vibrant within that shell, if that's the direction it goes. But those are two big issues for me. One is Lincoln Place and your analysis of that, what makes sense, doesn't make sense, and secondly, Dutton Books.
Thank you. I look forward to working with my fellow commissioners and Mr. Ken Bernstein, who's here, and looking at those issues. And I'll definitely have fresh eyes.
Yeah, and I look forward to those fresh eyes, because frankly, I believe in preserving quality buildings, obviously, because we need to have some history and some perspective of things. But for me, it's about people and their place within those structures, or people and their place within community and how it all fits together.
Okay. With pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to add my congratulations. This is a wonderful appointment to the Cultural Heritage Commission, and I think you will be a great addition. You have given so much to this city, whether professionally or personally, and this is just another, one of those feathers in your cap of how you have really contributed. So we look forward to working with you and particularly across the city. This commission is one that is gonna help us, I think, deal with a number of issues as we try to preserve our culture, so.
Thank you, and I'm extremely honored to be working with all of you and serving the mayor.
Great. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, if you would, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations, Mia.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 42 is the reappointment of Ms. Jill Farillo to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Could I have an introduction, please?
Yes, you may, Mr. Weiss.
Before we have the commissioners, members in the rear of the council, please come forward just a little. This is a delegation from China, from Chongqing, China. There are various people from their tax collection office here at a survey. Come forward just a little so everybody can see you. Give them a great welcome to the City Council of Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam President.
You're very welcome, Mr. Labonge. Welcome to Los Angeles. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
How long have you been on the fire commission?
For about a year and a half.
And I'm sure you read the newspaper.
I do.
And all of the issues that have taken place with the fire department.
Oh, yes.
As a commissioner, how do you plan in the reappointment to respond and to address and to eliminate some of the financial strains that the city of Los Angeles is facing with these settlements that are coming about with the fire department?
Well, in the last year and a half, as a member of the fire commission, we have been working really hard on pushing forward reforms within the department. And we're now in the implementation phase of those reforms, and we believe that the entire package of reforms will be instrumental in helping us to have the cultural change necessary within the department that will do exactly what you are putting forward here, which would be to reduce the amount of money that's being paid out in these losses.
Because it seems that there is a current, the fact there's a case going right now in court, another hostile environment discrimination case, and there's more pending, the one that received a lot of notoriety is the Tenney Pierce case, which is still pending litigation.
Yes.
The concern I have is that somehow the policy come from the commission, a very clear policy to the fire chief, to the members of the fire department, that it cannot be tolerated. And if it does happen, then there are very severe consequences. Otherwise, it continues like a merry-go-round and never ends up stopping. So I know that certain parts of the city are more responsive than others on that with the fire department, and the good old boys' club no longer is permitted in this day and age to tolerate within the fire department. So as a commissioner, the commission's aware, as I'm listening to your comments, and responsive and trying to come about with a resolution to those current situations regarding these lawsuits?
Yes, we have, we have, you know, obviously, we've adopted new policies and we are implementing those policies. And we actually, as commissioners, have actively gone out to the firehouses to engage the members of the department in discussions around the new policies. And we are actively supporting the chief, the new chief, and his campaign to implement those policies as well.
I understand his appointment has been well received by the firefighters.
Very well received.
Which is a positive direction for that. I'm just concerned--
It's very positive, very positive.
That issue of liability, which those dollars can be used for other vital city services that have to unfortunately be paid to make many of these settlements. And it seems that there's a growing epidemic within the ranks of the fire, where one person gets it, another person gets it, another person gets it, it's an easy way out with taxpayers' money and basically slaps the taxpayers in the face. But you are aware, you're cognizant of it, and your reappointment, you'll be continuing to focus on that to make sure that we can hopefully eradicate that particular situation.
Yes, we actually, at every commission meeting, we have it on our agenda and we continue to have discussions with the various people in the department who are responsible for implementing the different aspects of the new policies.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
There are a couple of issues of sensitivity with the fire department. I think Mr. Zine pointed out about the dog food business. In that issue, of course, we didn't know the guy was a prankster until afterwards, after we acted. But more importantly for me are women and gays and lesbians in the fire department. We need more women in the fire department.
I agree.
And we need a strategy to do that.
I agree.
And I'm just curious, do you have any thoughts about how we can get that percentage up, what things we need to do, we around the horseshoe as a city, to bring more women into the fire department?
Well, we've been working, again, as part of this process, for bringing about cultural change within the department. We've been working with many of the women who are in the department now to come up with some ideas, plans for the future to recruit more women. And we recently had a recruitment fair that focused on going out to different colleges where people are involved in athletic activities. And we had this recruitment fair where we had, you know, a few hundred women who came out to this recruitment fair. And all of, we had a very large number of women from the department who overs, you know, kind of oversaw that whole process and began to have some bonding experiences with new people who were very interested. And we got a number of applications from women who were very highly likely to make it through the drill tower. So we feel, felt good about that, and we think we want to expand upon that.
That's excellent. You know, Fire Station 62, which I'm honored to have in my district, we're gonna officially cut the ribbon of the new Fire Station 62. And they have created separate sleeping opportunities for the men and for the women, making it a much more unified building, but allowing the individuality and aspects of gender to be appreciated, so.
Yeah, that's a very important part of, you know, making our fire stations accommodating everyone. And that's something that we're very proud of, that we're able to do.
You know, one of the things we're all concerned about right now, Fourth of July fireworks and potential fires, with this being so dry, last year was the driest year on record.
Scary.
But let me ask you this, most of what firefighters do isn't fires. I mean, it is right now, this time of year. Could you explain to the people that the ambulance part of it is so significant, how that works?
Well, 82% of most of the calls that we get are medically related. And of course, everyone knows that we have, you know, that's probably the best fire department anywhere in the country when it comes to the medical response that we have. And, you know, we, I am the chair of the EMS commission of the fire department, I'm a registered nurse myself.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so we have just developed a five-year plan for, again, beefing up, continuing to beef up our EMS section of our fire department to, you know, improve the service that we give and to, for example, have more fire, more paramedics available in various communities.
Yeah, because 82% of what your response is health issues.
It's health-related, it's medical issues.
That's right.
We are, in some ways, we are, for many people in the city of Los Angeles, we are the only medical contact that they may have, because there's a lot of people who don't have access to care, so.
Well, that's where the blessing is for most people on that. I know in the Palisades area where my seniors are anxious about moving around, they know when they dial the fire department, they're there in a minute with an ambulance in case they need that help. Now, what about gays and lesbians? How do you see us moving forward in a non-discriminatory way to have more diversity from that perspective?
Well, what we've done as a commission is we've engaged people from the community, people from the gay and lesbian community, and we've had various meetings with them and forums with them to, you know, get their input as to what we can do. And again, I want to just emphasize that the new policies that we have adopted are, have a zero tolerance for any discrimination based upon, you know, race or sexual orientation. So we, again, with the zero tolerance policy, we believe that we can bring more folks in and make them feel included in the fire department.
Great. Well, we thank you very much for, again, stepping up to your leadership, and I appreciated your answers to these questions. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Alacon.
Yes, members, Jill has been a lobbyist in Sacramento for the Nurses Association for many years. And when I chaired the Labor Committee in the Senate, had many, many opportunities to work with Jill and the representative of the Nurses Association. And so I can certainly commend her as a nominee for this particular commission, because I know how important the healthcare industry is to her. But even long before that, I can tell you that Jill and I go back to when we were, I think, just about teenagers.
We were teenagers.
When we were activists and working on--
Not, is it that long ago?
Many, many years ago. And also, just as a side note, many of you remember Bud Farillo, the famous Herald Examiner sports writer. Well, this is, Jill is certainly his daughter, and he loved Los Angeles, we all know. And just that alone will get Tom Labonge's vote, so I had to mention that on the record. But I can tell you that Jill is a fighter for, a passionate fighter for the healthcare needs of the state of California. I think it's well-placed in the fire department, which a lot of people don't really consider to be, they view it as a public safety issue, but they don't see it as a health, as part of the health system. And in fact, the one thing that I do want to mention to you that is a longtime project that I've been fighting for is to establish pediatric trauma care in the San Fernando Valley.
Oh, yes.
We have no 24-hour pediatric trauma care in the San Fernando Valley. And whether it's at Northridge Hospital, at Holy Cross Hospital, or, thank you, Greg, or at Providence St. Joseph's Hospital in Burbank, the fact is the San Fernando Valley needs it. It puts our firefighters at risk, as you are probably aware. We lost several firefighters in transporting a victim of an accident, I believe it was, or moving a health-related patient. We lost in a fire, in a crash of a helicopter in, I believe it was 1998. And so, so this is something that I'll be very passionate about, and I'd love to work with you on that project. It would be good for the San Fernando Valley, it would be good for the fire department to get, and most importantly, would help get the victims to badly needed, as you remember, you supported my golden hour bill, I want to thank you for that.
Oh, yes.
But that is at the heart of the matter, and it will get them to traumatic care within that golden hour that can save their lives. And so I look forward to you. But I wanted to mention to my colleagues that I think this is a tremendous addition to our fire commission, and I'm looking forward to tremendous successes under your leadership and advice.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words about my father. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Charlamagne. Thank you, and also thank you for bringing attention to your great father, who was a dear friend of John Ferraro, who both went to Bell High School--
Yes.
--and had so much love of Los Angeles coming through his fingers to his pen and his typewriter back then. And I met him when I was with, doing football games with the National Football League years and years ago, and I, and God rest his soul, because I know he just passed. But with all that experience and all that love, you're an excellent choice for reappointment. I do appreciate your service to the fire department. We all go through challenging times, and the fire department goes through a challenging time, but there's never a challenge that the fire department can't meet. And that is so evident on May 8th and 9th, when a little small brush fire in Griffith Park grew to be the largest fire in the 40, since 40 years, and destroyed almost 1,400 acres, but no homes were lost.
That's right.
And it was great skill and determination and coordination of the fire department in that. The one committee that you mentioned that you're on is EMS committee.
Yes.
And I know I was involved as a staffer then, working for John Ferraro, where we uniformed, we consolidated some positions to make the paramedic class. And I don't, is there any thought about breaking up the paramedic firefighter class at all, that just have the paramedics, so those opportunities?
See, you know, there's, we've had so much discussion. This last year, we were going through the process of putting together the plan for the next five years, because we just recently completed the first five-year plan--
Right.
--which was very successful, and I think that we achieved most of our goals.
Right.
And in the process of that, of developing that process for the new five-year plan, that subject matter did come up, and it is still being, is under discussion in the committee that I chair. There are, of course, many different opinions on that, on that. There are some who believe that that might be a good idea, there are others that think that it's, that we're better to have everyone be a firefighter so that they can, you know--
Do both, dual function.
Exactly.
What came about, members, this is important, because it may come back to us. Years ago, the police department ran the ambulances, they called them the Brown Bombers, if I was correct. And then when they consolidated in 1970, there were still classes, still working in the firehouses, and they were on eight-hour shifts, not 24-hour shifts. And then there was also ambulance attendants and different other civil service classes. Finally, there was an effort by Chief Gerard's period, I think it was, to consolidate them into one firefighter, paramedic class. There may be an opportunity for many people to serve the city if there was a paramedic class that could work. I think times are different, I think it's worth looking at again. I know there's certain physical requirements that are challenging for anybody. I failed, it wasn't a physical test, and I don't want to say now you're gonna give me even more, Mr. Zine. It was the written test for the fire service that didn't meet the cut at Hollywood High School in 1974, or whenever it was. I think I would have passed the physical test, but I didn't even get that far. The point I'm trying to make is maybe we look at some of these classes to allow opportunity for all people to be able to serve the city in the fire service, whether it's in the medical response units, or whether it's on a fire truck, or a fire inspector, or whatever the case may be. So I would just encourage it, because it did come out of a different period of time of when there was classes of employees coming out of the police department, still working for the fire department, that had some challenges within the fire station, is why they merged it. So you could look at that history as well and maybe talk to some of the longtime veterans now, because it's almost 30 years ago that they started that process, about 20 years ago that they completed it. But anyway, thank you for the service of Los Angeles. Please call on me, or I'll call on you, to pursue that idea and concept, to see if it could work. And God bless your father's memory and your whole family. Bud Farillo, your family is one of the great families of all of Los Angeles. Thank you again, Mr. Alacon, for bringing that to my attention. And Madam President, back to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I just want to add, Jill is a constituent of mine and resident and has been an active member in the neighborhood up there. I think the issues that have been outlined by my colleagues on making sure more women within the fire department, what we can do to encourage that, look at our system, to some of the technology. We still are using triplicate form for paramedics, and I know we're about ready to hopefully go out to-- go out to RFP to have some of those handhelds. I think the fire department has been short-changed over the years, and the technology aspect particularly, and know that some of the things that the department has been looking at. So, thank you for your leadership there, and I think your experience as a nurse has added to the breadth and support within the commission, and just want to thank you again for your service, and look forward to another few years of activity on the commission. I think it really is a great commission, it has some challenges, but at this time we have a great commission to address those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jill. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item thirty-three was called special by Councilmember Weesar, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Mr. Weesar.
Thank you, Madam President. This item here is, I called it special to bring a technical amendment to this item. I've been informed by the city attorney's office that contract language required by the state needs to be incorporated into the committee report. In the audits committee, we heard this item last week. We passed around a motion that has language that will, that says that grant funds will not supplant city funds, and that has been circulated. Ask for your aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weesar. That amendment with this item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Thank you. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, called special by Councilmember Rosendale, and a substitute resolution has been circulated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
We do have one card, I don't know if you'd like...
Oh, please have the card.
Okay. Arnold Sacks.
Thank you very much. I've come before this council numerous times to discuss the Green Line, the Construction Authority, and the numerous construction authorities that are presented by the state and by MTA. And again, I question, why do you want to support a Green Line Construction Authority when the Green Line extension that you're talking about takes place within the city of LA? There is no East Side Extension Construction Authority, because the construction takes place within the city of LA. What are the standards for the Construction Authority? The Exposition Construction Authority, I believe the budget for the month, one of the last month's budgets is over $2 million. Spread out over a year, that's $24 million. What is MTA spending the money on? If the Construction Authority is not necessary because the building of the rail line will take place within the city of LA, then why even have a stand on this issue? Please, somebody, look at what's going on. Where is the funding going to? We just had a major increase in MTA because they claim they don't have, they have a budget shortfall. The reason they have a budget shortfall is because they make up all these phantom construction authorities, and nothing happens. The Foothill Construction Authority has been in existence for over five or six years, but yet there's no construction being done in the foothills. Where is the funding going? Why, why back a bill when it's not necessary, it's just adding additional funding that's going nowhere? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Rosendale, followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is a great day for the city of Los Angeles. We're focusing back on the Green Line that in 1994 was put on hold. A good EIR was done, and it's a mile and a half to two miles from LAX. And as we go forward with the modernization of LAX, and spend that three to five billion dollars in making it the world-class airport that we deserve to have, we'll make two stops and get it into the People mover at the airport. It will give two things immediate relief. First, those who work at the airport will have a chance to take this light rail and go to the airport. And also, when we cut the ribbon on the People mover, we can cut the ribbon of this piece that's in the city of Los Angeles that I vigorously will fund with airport money and aviation access money and other strategies that in no way impact in a negative way the existing priorities of the MTA board. And I'm very pleased that Herb Wesson and I were able to find language that we could both live with. This now gives us the opportunity to go back to Sacramento, blow some life back into a suspended situation there with Fabio Nunez in the Appropriations Committee, and with Mr. Wesson's history as a Speaker of the Assembly, a great leader, I might add, who's now with us here in the council, I'm very convinced that we'll be able to make this thing happen. The monies are not the issue here, the real issue is, is getting that stop at Aviation and Century, and another one at Parking Lot C, and then into the airport, as we spend those monies on the Tom Bradley Terminal, the Consolidated Rental Facility, the People mover, and all the other modernization aspects of the midfield system as well, that we will have more planes there that can go into the midfield. So it's a great day. I want to thank Mr. Smith, who has taken leadership on this on the committee, and historically has played a role with wanting this to happen, and I appreciate all my colleagues here and their support on this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Labonge and Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand and ask the council to support this substitute language that Mr. Rosendale and Mr. Wesson have brought forward. As Chair of the committee, I frequently look to the expertise of the former Speaker of the State Legislature, Mr. Herb Wesson, for his knowledge and understanding of how to get a bill passed. Mr. Zine and I both, as members of the committee, sat there and listened to Mr. Rosendale's pledge of support and wanting to get this done, and we both asked the question, why wasn't this done in the first place? This is an opportunity the city of LA missed a long time ago, and it needed to be connected, it needed to be done, it needs to be completed, and Mr. Lew's bill in the Assembly will help us do that. However, Mr. Wesson pointed out very succinctly that the way the law was written, there are some flaws and some problems that were yet to be resolved, that have to be resolved in Sacramento. And with his expertise and knowledge, the language that was brought forward that made it possible, I think, to get the bill passed in Sacramento, to get the thing done, and to resolve issues that still remain on the table from some people at MTA and people in Sacramento. And so I just commend both Mr. Rosendale and Mr. Wesson for coming together, as this body so often does, and find a way to find a consensus that makes sense that we can go forward with this, and say to the people of LA, we are trying to resolve these issues, we're trying to go to the legislature and get support for these issues, and finally someday be able to cut the linkage that was denied to the people of LA when the Green Line stopped miraculously a mile and a half outside of LAX. And so again, Mr. Wesson, I once again appreciate your expertise, your real value to this committee, and I urge the council's support. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Mr. Karsch, could you come to the center table? Did, Mr. Smith, did you, not to question you, but when you had this in committee, did they explain why it never went into the airport?
There are a lot of theories on why, and those were expressed, yes, but...
One theory was the RTD member lived in the South Bay, and they wanted to try to get to their district, was that one theory?
That's one. There's also the cab theory, that the cabs didn't want it to go down.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good theory, because I think it would, but the other theory was that the LAX people didn't want to have the master plan dictated by the rail line.
And I think also, at the time, we had not provided a master plan, we were just beginning the process. So there's a lot of urban legends out there of why, I don't think anybody really knows for sure. The point is, it doesn't go through.
Right.
And that's what Mr. Rosendale...
Now we're moving forward. And I think I did a motion when I first got here to do this, and work with your predecessor, Ms. Skakowsky, on this issue here. Mr. Karsch, where do you think everybody wants to go tomorrow? One place, Venice Beach. So why can't we get this Green Line to go all the way down Imperial to the beach, to Dockweiler Beach? Could there be some thought in long range?
Madam President, if I can respond to Mr. Labonge?
Right.
You may, and Mr. Labonge's time there, go ahead.
Mr. Labonge, you're right on the mark, babe. What we need is a north-south relief corridor as well. Santa Monica became such a job capital, my district is totally gridlocked, as is the whole South Bay. So in the long run, not to jump, leapfrog over anybody else's issues, we're going to have a north-south, finally, happening that will be effective. But this is the first step in getting us forward on the Green Line. Also, the Expo Line, as it goes to Santa Monica, will be a tremendous relief effort. And as we get bus-only lanes going throughout our region, that's also going to help. But Tom, you're right, our gridlock in the Southland is huge, and we need that kind of leadership that focuses on all of it.
Yeah, I would just say, and if there's any way to get, the woman who's here, the surf program, remember a couple of weeks ago?
Sure.
We gave her some of our GCP money to get children from Los Angeles to the beach, but the Green Line right now, where's it stop, Mr. Karsch?
Several blocks before LAX.
Yeah, at Sepulveda.
I've taken...
And miniature golf course, don't we?
Right. But anyway, I would like to see it go all the way out Imperial to Dockweiler Beach. I knew Fred Dockweiler, who was the son of the original Dockweiler, who was the city attorney of a hundred years ago. And at least if people get to the coast, and if you look at the old historic pictures of Santa Monica at Venice, there was that little tram that used to run along there, and the red car used to go out there.
The red car, down in the Boulevard.
So add it all together, it gets people to the beach.
Right.
Because that's an important thing. Mr. Karsch, let me ask you a question. How many years of the city have you had?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, and how many years is it coming up to?
It'll be thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Next week.
Next week is your retirement?
That's correct.
And I just want to give an opportunity, because I, you're at the center table here, I've got forty-four more seconds. Anything you want to say? Thank you, Mr. Karsch, for intergovernmental relations, you've always done a great job. Give Mr. Karsch a big hand. Keep it there, get there, get that shot of him at the table, so he can put it in his souvenir.
There you go.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you. You've been great on the West Side cog, helping us with leadership there, with Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Culver City, and all of that. Appreciate all your leadership. Thank you so much.
I've enjoyed it.
Next speaker is Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. The first thing that I do want to say, that working with Michael on IGR has been a joy, that you're very knowledgeable, and it helps us tremendously when we can work with a pro. And you are a professional, and you will be missed. The next thing that I want to say, where it relates to Mr. Labonge, knowing someone for one hundred years, I would just want to say, Tom, you are well-preserved. Maybe it's something in that pumpkin bread that we don't know about.
From the nun, yeah.
And to Bill, I want to thank you for those kind words, but no one should be fooled. This was Bill Rosendale's idea, along with his very capable staff, and I'm drawing, I'm having a senior moment, and I'm forgetting her name. This was Laura?
Laura.
Laura should, I mean, you should definitely let her know, she did a fantastic job on this. But this is Mr. Rosendale's plan, Mr. Rosendale's idea. To the President, I really enjoy being on this committee. I think that Mr. Smith is a phenomenal chair, and Smith and Wesson, for whatever reason, we seem to get along quite well, and to have Dennis Zine on there. So I find this committee very enjoyable. And it was a pleasure for me to just give some insight, where related to how things work in Sacramento, and I hope that the amended language helps Mr. Rosendale in being successful in this endeavor. So I don't want people to say that this was me, because it was not, it was you, Bill. And I also say that to say that, don't set the bar so high. I'm only five-five, so I don't know if I can continually reach the bar, but you do have my commitment to try to assist in moving this forward. We recognize the need to make this connection, and there are a lot of things that this city needs to do, so it's very important for us to really focus on issues such as this and give them the level of importance that they truly deserve. And lastly, again, Michael, it has been my honor to work with you, and you will truly, truly, truly be missed. In fact, Mr. Chair, I think that we should have a nationwide search to try to find the proper replacement for Mr. Karsch. And one of the prerequisites is that whoever replaces him will continue to call me Mr. Speaker, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Our next person is Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Zine.
You took my line, Mr. Garcetti, I was going to say that. If that's what it takes, I'll call you Mr. Speaker every single day. But no, thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Wesson. And I just wanted to stand up as Chair of Transportation Committee and acknowledge Mr. Rosendale and Mr. Smith and the others who have specifically, I think, said, we need a contiguous system, we need a system that works, we need a seamless system that is going to get people from point A, not just to point B, but to the end of the line, and particularly to the airport. And that, as we look at a vision by the MTA and the city of Los Angeles, that we can really create that seamless system, go after aggressively those federal and state dollars and local dollars to make it a reality. And I think that this is one example of where the leadership in the IGR committee and the experience of Mr. Wesson and others, and the passion of Mr. Rosendale, came up with something that we all be able to support as we move forward. So thank you very much, and also encourage an aye vote.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you. First, on the Green Line, we all got along to make it work, and it was Mr. Rosendale's passion to see the logic come out of illogic. And the illogic part is that spur that ends abruptly, where the southern part goes down El Segundo, the part in the airport abruptly stops. And being a member of that committee, I remember when Mr. Wesson was not going to support it, and then the Chair, Mr. Smith said, get together and let's work it out. Obviously, that's been done because of the ability of the Speaker emeritus to get things done. When he can corral all those legislators, it's easy to corral just a couple of people here in council, so congratulations for making that happen. And I'll, Mr. Karsch, we serve on ICA and the Pan City Association, you've been with the city for many, many years. I didn't know this was a farewell, but I thought that would become an appropriate time. And I hear rumors that you're not going to disappear from the city of Los Angeles or from the Southern California area. You'll always be welcome, and in whatever endeavor you do, and if it's what I think you're going to do, your value is still very, very high. Your knowledge is extreme, whether it be the Judicial Prejudice Commission, where we sit together, or the Independent Cities Association, where you work with many different cities around here, and the knowledge that you've gained. And anytime you have information to present, it's from memory. You don't look at your notes in committee or any other place. You've got a reservoir of information on all the issues that deal with legislation, so congratulations, and I wish you well, but I don't think you're going to be traveling too far away, which is a benefit for all of us, so best to you, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendale.
Just a final wrap-up on it, I want to thank everybody who spoke, and your kind comments, and we are together on this. I want to thank Ted Lew, a great state assemblyman who put eight-eight-nine together, has been working tirelessly up there and making it happen. He's a great leader, and I think the combination, Janice Hahn, who is on the Green Line Task Force, because she represents the far end of the dreams of getting the coastal north-south congestion worked on, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support on this issue, and I look for a unanimous vote, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendale. If we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifty ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Before our next item, colleagues, we have all fifteen of us here, and we do not have a picture with Councilmember Alarcon, so Mr. Rosendale suggested we do our class photo, so if we can have everybody take a little break, we'll do our photo of the ninety-ninth session real quick, and we will take up the next item shortly thereafter. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please. Next item.
Item 43 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item 43 is before us. We'd like to go out to the San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Ms. Brewer, for your patience. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, speaking on number 43. The establishment of the salary for the new class of Playground Equipment Supervisor in the Department of Recreation and Parks. Fiscal impact statement. The CAO reports that no cost will be incurred this year, as the department is currently holding two other positions vacant. The annual ongoing costs, including retirement, will be $88,547 for the fiscal year 2007 to '08. My question is, and I don't know if there is any paperwork, but what the description of what this Playground Equipment Supervisor is going to do, whether or not their salary, what they're going to do justifies a base salary, according to the council file, of And wouldn't it be more important to take and have possibly the two positions that are vacant filled, and have two more people working in the department than just this one person? Again, what is the description that this Playground Equipment Supervisor is going to be doing to earn $88,547? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. That closes our general public comment. Any council members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved, or that is approved. And if there's no objection, colleagues, as budget items for the beginning of the fiscal year, items nine through 17 will go forthwith without objection, seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item 46 called special for cards from the public.
Item 46 is next. Suma Dog on number 46.
Yes, just like to briefly say that this does say city-owned real property being dedicated for public street. I know there's sometimes concerns with city property, which means the people's property being decided how it's used without true public input. But it is 4th of July weekend. I've come here way too much, a lot of times in the past year, so let's just say I'll yield the rest of my time, just so we can all have a little shorter of a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item 46 and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith, number 48.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have someone from the staff, please come forward. All right. The questions I wanted to ask, just a couple of simple ones. I looked at the report, and there's not much information in here. Quantitatively, what do we know and what we're getting for the investment of the DWP money on this project? How many people go through it? How many do we train? What comes out of this investment? Because I am unclear to that.
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is David Sickler. I'm the new Executive Director for Labor Relations at the Department of Water and Power. And I'd like to call on our co-administrators for the Joint Training Institute to answer your question.
Okay.
Susanna Reyes and Frank Miramontes.
Hi, I'm Susanna Reyes. I'm the Management Administrator for the Joint Training Institute. Basically, the Joint Training Institute oversees the training programs. We conduct training needs analysis of the training programs at the DWP. At this point in time, we have not just a crisis, but there is a looming great number of employees who are eligible to retire. So we are focusing on what training needs we have in terms of filling the positions because of the employees who will be leaving. And in addition, we are also looking into improving the apprenticeship programs, where we have a high rate of dropout. And I think one of the most important things of the Joint Training Institute is, we are mandated by City Council through an ordinance to do an outreach to the communities, so that we can tell them about the training opportunities that are available, that the department provides, so that then we can reach out to them and enable them to gain skills for gainful employment at the DWP and at the city in general.
I know that DWP is a very special skill set. It's not, you just hire an electrician and expect them to be able to even understand what they're doing. So I understand that need. The question I had is numerically, how many people are we seeing through the program? What are we getting bang for our buck, as far as, would it be better to say the community college do a program for us than instituting our own program? Where's the cost analysis on that?
We do not do the training per se, but we are an advisory and consulting body to the divisions and their training programs. Where the value that you can see is that we're sort of a neutral third party who looks at the effectiveness of their training programs as they ramp up apprentices through the apprenticeship programs. And we're also looking at certifying the internal trainers at the DWP, and looking at improving the skill sets of employees. So we don't do the training programs per se, but we give them the tools and the resources to do that.
And that I understand. So again, I understand the need. I understand the concept. Numerically, how many people are in the program? What are we getting through the program?
The Joint Training Institute represents the interests of the employees represented by IBW Local 18, of which that's 94% of the total workforce of the DWP. Currently, we have 8,500 employees.
Again, I know this information. What I want to know is how many people are coming through this training program and into DWP? Is it one? Is it 500? What are we getting for eight, a couple million dollars?
Well, as mentioned, we are responsible, and we oversee over 8,000 different employees, and we have different programs. And let me give you an example of one of the programs that the Joint Training Institute is taking the lead on. And that is working with the LINE series. We've just finished getting an agreement on how to do a split program, so we have overhead and underground programs for the LINE series, which will be coming through beginning of next year. So that's just one of the different many parts within the Department of programs that we work with to become successful. Another example is one that we're working with in putting together a, what we call e-learning suite, which is an electronic learning system, in which we have, the Joint Training Institute is providing the funds for the software, hardware, and everything that goes to that. And that is for all the DWP employees. So, you know, it affects all DWP employees, if I understand your question.
All 8,000 employees?
That's correct.
That includes clerical? That includes security guards? All?
That particular program would affect every DWP employee.
Okay. I finally heard a number, because I've been asking for three minutes now for a number. Okay, I've got that. Now, secondly, the last concern I have is, over two years ago, I think there was an article in one of the local papers, that there was no clear tracking on this money, that there was in fact some questions about where the union was using the money, and they wouldn't reveal it to us. Have we tightened up that in this contract?
This is a joint labor and management program. It's not a union program. The trustees of the funds are both labor and management. We invite our DWP commissioners to attend, participate. They get to look at all the funds and expenditures on a quarterly basis. We provide information as to what we're doing. This is not, the money, because it is a trust, it's a legal document that we have, the obligation to spend all the monies in the area of training. And that has been done.
And so anybody from the news media that wants to come and see where the money is being spent can now see that? Because that wasn't the case before.
Well, they have to go through the process.
There is a, there is a public, once a year, the trust presents that their overall expenditures to the city. So that's something that's there, if they want to dig far enough and find it, that's what it is. Our main...
Present it to the commission?
Our objective is to do training of the department, and that's what we're focused on.
But my objective is to make sure the public's money is spent properly, and that's why I'm asking these questions. So the money that we're giving from Water and Power to participate in this program is publicly available to the commission members and through a yearly report.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith, I met with Chair of the Commission, David Nahai, yesterday and talked briefly about this. He's very much in support of this program, pushed it very hard, and as Chair of the Commission is keeping a close eye on it. But as Susanna said, we really are at a critical juncture in terms of getting people in the right positions, selected, trained in the pipeline, because we're going to lose close to 50%.
I have no problem with that issue. The issue is one of maintenance and control of the public's money, and that it's done properly. That's all I'm asking about. That's why I was asking the question. I understand the program. I understand the need. It's the money and how it's spent that was a concern to me, and I've gotten some of those answers, not all, but I think...
I agree with you, because if it's not spent right, we'll sink the whole department. We've got to use it to, we have to use it to train people that can rebuild the infrastructure.
I just want to reassure you, Councilmember, that we have the protocols and the controls set for this.
Mr. Labange is our next speaker, then Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Karsch.
Thank you for your questions. But this is a very important program. And just as we talk about getting 1,000 police officers needed for the underserved police department, our Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is understaffed, and there's a large number which will be reaching retirement. And I can't guarantee, as much as I'd like to, that power is not going to be shut off by nature or by man, due to the fact that there's not enough people, and they need to train them. So we should do more training all we can. We want to see integration with our community colleges, with trade tech, with other schools from throughout. And we should recruit people locally, from schools locally, from our high schools as well, to try to get in these jobs that are extremely important to serve the City of Los Angeles. This institute is real important. When I was there at Water and Power for the year and a half, they had a great program to push and educate all their employees, all of them. So when they talk about all of them being touched, all of them will be touched in some way or another. So I just want to stand and support this. We're more than 1,000 short. We've got to figure it out, and we've got to come back together and find a way to get these people now. Because as you may know, when there's a disaster, often it's what they call boomers. Is that the correct term? If Tony want to explain that term?
The baby boomers.
Not baby boomers. We're baby boomers. They're boomers. They're guys who worked in all the south and everywhere they're working.
They travel around, yeah.
What do you call them?
They're boomers, the folks that just travel around from place to state.
From place to place. They go from state to state, because we should have them here. You know, they're all working the tragedies of the Midwest with the hurricane, not the hurricanes, the tornadoes. But we need them here in case there's some activity that caused to upgrade our system, because it needs upgrading. It's very old. Thank you very much. I stand for an i-vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank you for your hard work in putting this program together. About three or four years ago, we had this discussion about how the retiring employees were essentially leaving a void, that we had skill sets that we needed to develop, given the state of our schools. Our kids weren't learning about the carpentry and electrical and things that we assume youngsters would have as they come into the workforce, and that there was this big gap in how we were able to connect those that were coming in versus those that were leaving. Does this job training program allow us to address that? And if it does, and I just want to get back to Councilmember Smith's question, can that be quantified either quarterly or annually as to how many bodies are actually learning from this program? Please hold my time.
One of the priorities of the Joint Training Institute is what you just mentioned, is connect to the communities and to tell them about the skills that we need and the training programs that we have. We have established partnerships with the schools, the trade tech, and some of the learning centers. We are doing a targeted outreach, and we, and the JTI specifically, is looking into entry-level type of job classifications, working closely with city personnel, so that we can use some of the job source centers, the occupational training centers, and really relay the information. Because I said, and as you said, there is really a gap in terms of the skills, because they don't really know what jobs, they know about the jobs at DWP, but they don't know what skills and competencies are required to get that job, given the civil service employment setting that we have. So the communication outreach will be targeted towards that, and we are going to prioritize specific targeted entry-level classes. And one of them is a utility pre-craft helper that we're working on.
What you do, you use the words "will be." Does that mean it's not in place yet? Or if it's in place, how effective have we been?
There's an ongoing discussion right now, and that's one of our priorities for the Joint Training Institute.
So it's not in place yet?
It's meet and confer when it comes to the new classes. But the outreach efforts are already there. We have partnered with LAUSD. In fact, we have already applied for some grant, and we are part of the Regional Educational Development Institute that was, that is a partnership with LA Trade Tech and also with LAUSD.
Thank you. I still haven't heard a number, though. I'm fishing for that number. Can you give me a quarterly or semi-annual number as to who has actually entered the program or benefited from the program, or graduated from the program? Any way you can phrase that? Because you say it applies to all 8,000. I understand that. I understand its purpose. I understand all that. But have you had the type of progress where you can show how many have benefited from it?
We do not have that number right now, because we just started the initiative late last year. And we are going, we do have a tracking system that is in place, that we will monitor. And if you'd like, we can give your office a report on that, once we have it going.
I would appreciate that, because it at least allow us to help you extend that funnel to get candidates in place, so that you can get the type of labor force that reflects those who live in the city, and fill that gap with those skill sets that will allow them to compete and qualify.
We do work very closely with the Mayor's Workforce Development Office, with some of the, with the CDD. In fact, Mr. Miramontes sits also on the Workforce Investment Board. So there are resources and communication that we know, and we're just going to be out there, and we will track it.
I'll ask, give us a chance in the council, because I represent a district that's high poverty, high unemployment, and I appreciate everything the mayor's doing, but can also help us extend to those that we know within our constituency base.
We will take note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Alarcon, and then Ms. Perry. Our next speaker is Mr. Alacon, and then Ms. Perry.
Yes, I think it's fair to ask all these questions. One element that I wanted to bring to the council's attention is the shortage of specialists in the utility fields. So, if you could perhaps describe how DWP employees are actually being wooed into private electric and other utility companies, and how they're being targeted, because they're very qualified and there's a high demand for these kinds of workers throughout the state?
I'd like to address that. I think it's pretty well-known, it's a national issue with the utilities for the fact that we have an aging workforce. I think our, the DWP average work age is 48 years old. Folks are going to be eligible to retire at 55, and in particular, the areas of blue-collar work where people very rarely last too much further than the date that they are able to retire is, causes a problem. In years past, the department did used to rely, to a certain extent, in trying to get folks from Edison, from San Diego Gas Electric, from PG&E. That's no longer the case. They're all in the same boat. They're all putting a lot of money and effort to recruit and to start training. Our belief and our target is to try to recruit locally. We believe if we have local people, they're going to stay with the company. So, some of the areas that Ms. Reyes was speaking to is really that particular area, is targeting local areas. But the fact is that the critical positions are typically three- to four-year apprenticeship programs. So, even if we get them in the door today, it's going to be three or four years before they can really be released on their own and do critical work. So, you know, it really... We feel as it's a critical issue that needs to be addressed right away, and we're doing our best to work within the department and with the community to meet those goals.
Well, members, I would like to remind you that we have made major strides in supporting a massive investment into rebuilding our utility infrastructure at DWP. A critical component of that infrastructure is our human capital, and this is part and parcel of an endeavor to reinvigorate, improve, in many ways, a dilapidated infrastructure that needs attention. It also provides training for our personnel to be able to understand that infrastructure that is, in many ways, falling apart. And it's a critical understanding that our employees must have. But I also wanted to add to that conversation, the notion that we are competing against some very aggressive private utilities out there, who would love to have our top-quality employees in their systems, and who pay more, and will pay more to get them. And so, this is an essential part of rebuilding our infrastructure, it's an important part of retaining the quality of employees that we have at DWP, and it's an essential... It's essential to the operation of the Department of Water &amp; Power well into the future. And I remind you again that this is a joint labor-management effort to build a team that works best for the utility users in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Our next speaker is Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'll make this very, very quick. For years, I have worked with various trade groups to try to bring people who have low skilled or unskilled or no skills, and the biggest gap and the place where you could really help the most is on algebra. Because without algebra, a lot of these kids or younger people, or people who just want to try, and are going back for a GED, they can't meet the algebra requirement that is often required in skilled work, and particularly in electrical work, at the apprentice level even. So, if you could really focus on that, you could open a door for a lot more people.
In response to your... We already have some initiatives going into that particular area. We offer our employees a free 16-week online training course on math. It's a math tutorial. We're also working with this math section or division of LAUSD in terms of looking at work-based, real-life scenarios at DWP where math is used, and looking at applying it into small learning communities. And then it will then reach out to the other components in the community. So, we do intend, and we recognize, that math is one skill that is required in a lot of the jobs.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Cardenas is our last speaker on the queue.
First question is, the funding for this, is it pretty constant? Can you tell me relative to last year and the year before, and this coming year, what the amount is?
The amount, which was agreed to, and the reason that it's coming through now, is 15 cents per working hour for each IVW member, which comes out to approximately 2.1 million, which was, what was in the past, was $2 million for three years in putting the program together. So, that's what it will be to the end of the contract year.
So, in the past, it was $2 million a year?
Yes.
Two million per year?
Two million per year.
Two million per year?
That's correct.
So, it's pretty constant, past and present, the amount?
It was what?
The actual amount is consistent and constant?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Now, when you... First of all, I'd like to also get a copy of the report, the documents that Councilmember Reyes asked for, please. Secondly, is there anything that precludes any joint use or joint program with LAUSD, for example, with high school students who are 16 and 17 and going to be 18 years old, who potentially could be in your workforce? I think earlier, somebody mentioned that it usually takes about three years for somebody to get up to speed to actually be employable at that level of technical skill.
Yes, correct, and that's part of our outreach program. And Susanna, you want to respond to that?
Part of our outreach program is with the LAUSD on the 16 to 24, or 18 to 24 ages. We're also looking at revamping the student-worker program, because we believe that work-based type of internships will be very effective. And as I mentioned to Councilmember Perry earlier, we're looking into improving the math skills of the LAUSD from grades nine to 12. So, there are outreach efforts that will touch the lives of the high school students, and really looking at also potentially the high-risk students who may drop out, or who would like to consider other options other than going to college. That's where our targeted efforts will be. We're going to be talking to them, to the parents, to the PTA, to community groups. We're currently working with Community Coalition in terms of construction academies, making sure that they know the DWP's jobs, what DWP jobs are out there, and what opportunities are out there for them to gain that type of training. Because eventually, there will be jobs that are really just basic, but the jobs that DWP needs, need some kind of skills, and those are the skills that we would like for them to have.
Now, my point is, I remember when I was in high school, back then, we had wood shop and auto shop and metal shop, and kids were using welding equipment, they were climbing under cars or what have you. Unfortunately, in my opinion, I think some of the schools are super hypersensitive about liability and have really reduced that kind of activity. But that's the kind of skill that someone could actually learn, and it would actually put them on hyperdrive to be able to get a certificated skill by the time they're 18 years old. So, my question to you is, what is the department going to be able to afford perhaps LAUSD students while they're still in high school? Not once they graduate and say, "Okay, now start this program where we'll teach you the skills that lead to your certificate, that lead to your qualifications, where you can take the test, and then get a job making 20, 30, 40 dollars an hour." What are you going to afford them?
Well, one of the things that... That's one of the programs that we're working right now with the Los Angeles City Schools, and that is working with them to put in the curriculum those type of things that are needed to be able to be successful in our apprenticeship programs. We're also working with the Los Angeles City Schools that are putting various specific high schools that they're going to target, those type of programs, and they're seeking information from us, is the type of information that they'll need to learn in the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade.
And who are they talking to at the Department of Water &amp; Power?
Well, Susanna and myself, as administrators, are part of the team that works with them. We also have a lady by the name of Pamela Porter, who is the lead person on DWP workforce investment, and then there's some people from the General Manager's Office also.
So, Pamela Porter is one of the main individuals?
That's correct.
She's working with a new organization called LA Infrastructure Academy, where we're actually reaching out to young people to encourage them to take math and science courses. In the past, we've done this, and we really haven't been able to show young people any employment opportunities. That's changed now, whether we're talking about DWP job opportunities, or even construction, with all the new construction that's going on.
Well, one of the issues that DWP has that is not lost on all of the industry in this country is, we're talking about the baby boomers, as they're called.
That's right.
We have a workforce where people are basically, you know, in their 50s or so, and now they're at the point where they can choose to hang in there and work another 10 years, or they might say, "You know what? It's time to hang up my boots, and I'm going to go fishing."
That's right.
But the thing is, if an influx of those individuals decide to leave when they can, rather than work longer and decide to continue to give their skills to their current employment, then we're going to have a big problem, right?
That's correct.
And the problem is, you can't hire somebody to replace them just off the street. They have to have certain amount of skills, they have to be able to test in at a certain level, they have to have certain amount of experience, or potentially be ready to have that kind of online experience, correct?
Exactly, and that's where a lot of our efforts are going, and as I mentioned, Pamela Porter was designated from the department as one of the lead persons in the workforce development, and we work right along with her, and we have been, and that's right on top of our agenda to work with it. And that's why we've made all the contacts we have and been working with LA Trade Tech and Los Angeles City Schools.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, and I just want to make it very clear that I didn't say whether or not Pamela Porter was a baby boomer H person, okay? Just make that clear.
We won't tell her.
I don't know, and it's okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And with that, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. I understand 59, we have the amendment. If there's nobody wishes to be heard on item 59, let's go ahead and take that up. If we can, please prepare the roll as amended and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. And Mr... Sorry, Mr. Rosendahl has asked for item number 60 to be taken out of order. If there's no objection, we'll take up 60. We have two comment cards. You want to take those up first, Mr. Rosendahl? Or you want to... Okay. Zuma Dog is our first speaker on item number 60, and after that will be Michael Hunt.
Yes, what a strange, interesting day this is, City Council, because I came in here, April 4th, 2006, over ordinance 4215, Venice Beach. They said I couldn't sell my Zuma Dog shirts anymore. They said Matt Dowd couldn't sell his incense, and they said Michael Hunt could not sell his Shea butter. And I came in here, I said, "Well, gee, you can't tell me I can't sell a politically protected T-shirt. That sounds unconstitutional." And I literally thought that you guys just didn't know. I literally thought it was just a mistake, and that I'd come in here and bring it to your attention, it'd be a one-time trip, and I'd be back selling T-shirts. But I found a few other things out about City Hall now, didn't I, people? And now, look what's happened. The Pandora's Box of Zuma Dog has been unleashed. Thank you, Michael Hunt, for dragging me in here to fight for my constitutional rights. And now, the whole thing's been open and exposed. I shouldn't have even been here, ladies and gentlemen. Let me tell you what a triumphant day today is in the city of Los Angeles. A federal judge said, I mean, the constitutional violations would prohibit the enforcement of the statute, so as to prohibit the type of vending that was regulated by the statute. So, a judge has said, the 5th to 14 of you that took away our income were wrong in the first place. And now, he's saying to you, "I'm going to give you a chance to do it on your own, before I give you the smackdown in court and do it myself anyway." And there will be legal challenges, there will be checks written, and I'd like to say, please be more mindful, City Council, when you do these things, because I am your karma. I am your bad karma. I've been sent here, and I've been a miserable year. Your bad karma. You finally hit somebody, you violate things all over town, and you pass all these rules until you finally hit Zuma Dog on Venice Beach, and the community brought me in here. The community brought me here, and so, this is your karma, and after the past year, I think it's finally going to come to an end.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. I'm the founder of the 4215, the godfather of Venice Beach for the 4215. When I came down here, I tried to explain to you guys that you guys was in constitutional violation of this ordinance. The judge said that, you know, to enforce this is unconstitutional. I tried to tell you guys that all alone. But even more important, I tried to bring you guys something other, another plan. Now, what I'm promoting is what Dean Pragerston says, the Honorable Dean Pragerston, and this is what you guys should be promoting too, is nothing but this, the violations. I handed a copy of this to everybody once before. If you need a copy, this is what Dean Pragerston said, this is what he wants down here, and that's what you guys should follow suit. City Attorney will tell you guys all kind of other things. This is the only thing that you guys should listen to, is what Dean Pragerston is saying. Get on board, let's do this right, let's get people back to work, let it inextricably intertwine, and let it be fair across the board, not a section here, and not a section there. The CRLA need to be working on getting health benefits for these people who make less than $12,000 and not trying to pay city taxes. They need to be trying to encourage these people to keep on working on their own, so that they can pay health insurance for their families, and that they can make a means of ends for their family. It's enough money on Venice Beach for everybody. If you got $20 million already, like the Jay Faders now have, you're not going to have $20 million and then 100 because of sales tax. You can't parcel out the tax from the sales, and there's nothing else that you can do about it. Parks and Recreation, you need to return it back to the way it was, from 9 until 7 a.m. No organization, save yourself some money. Please listen to what Dean Pragerston said, and if you need a copy, I'll hand you a copy. Mr. Hunt, thank you.
That is our public comment on this. I'd like to return to Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, appreciate that. And just to bring us all up to date, we did go into closed session last week on this, and as you know, we discussed in this closed session the ongoing litigation over our attempts to restrict commercial vending at Venice Beach. Under the supervision of the federal judge, we are engaged in settlement discussions, and Judge Pragerston is a great guy, to help us craft a new ordinance that protects free speech, preserves the spirit of Venice Beach, and cracks down on the continued problem of commercial vending that threatens the business community and crowds out performers and free speech activity. The motion before us today helps us execute our legal strategy and make sure that an order during the summer months while we craft the new ordinance... I mean, we need order at the beach during these summer months. I was there on Saturday, and there are issues. This motion does five things. It asks the city attorney to craft legislation repealing two sections of the ordinance that judge has advised need to be clearer and tighter in order to be constitutional. Two, it directs the LAPD, Wreck and Park, to enforce the remaining sections of the ordinance. It asks the city attorney to draft a new ordinance solving the problems the judge has pointed out, while protecting free speech and limiting commercial activities. Four, uses existing city ordinances to protect residents from excessive noise. And five, asks the state to crack down on rogue vendors who are avoiding paying sales tax. And I ask for unanimous vote from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this issue? If not, we have that before us. Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with, without objection. Next item, please.
Item 54 was called special for cards from the public, and a substitute motion on item K has been circulated.
Okay. Our first speaker on this is Zuma Dog. Then we'll go out to Van Ays and hear from Sharon Brewer and Donna Perriman.
Thank you, City Council, for that last one. You know how good it feels. That's what I came in here for. I thought I was right. Thank you. So, you can make a difference, you can get these guys to do something, it just takes a year, and you almost have to die. But now, let's talk about some good things, y'all. It's 40... It's 4th of July, the city does spend money on special events, and we're gonna talk about some of the great things so we can get the money's worth. First of all, 4th of July, all over, please come out to the 4th of July celebrations, meet your neighbors, embrace the community, the best type of outreach you can do is right there. It's been a great blessed experience. It has changed me. The community events that you experience when you go to these special events in the community, it's changed me forever. And some of them are on Saturday, Neighborhood Block Party in Zine's District. They should put the addresses down so I could say where it is. But in Zine's District, it is Saturday, Neighborhood Block Party, 1300 Woodruff Avenue Block Party. Come on down, y'all. Zuma Dog's gonna try to make it. And that is, is that in Weiss's District, I believe? We got the Zamora Block Club Annual 4th of July Block Party. That is 4th of July, and that is in Parks District, I believe. Prince Concert, is that the Prince Lake, that's in Wendy Gr- is that Prince Lake, the Prince of Purple Rain? Oh my God, Prince is coming to town, dude, he's here till, oh, we missed it already. But the good thing is, something Zuma Dog fought for, we used to pay when Prince would come to concert, we used to pick up the tab. I said, that's not right, and I'm proud to say that it says here that the event sponsor shall reimburse the city for all fees and costs, and that's what I was fighting for. And thank you, City Council, you can make some change here. Come on down to City Hall, fight for what you believe, they will hopefully listen, and we can all say today is truly a great day in the city of Los Angeles. Happy 4th of July.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Our next speaker is Sharon Brewer out in Van Nuys.
Sharon Brewer, item number 54, special events. On today's agenda, we have 22 items for reimbursed, or to reimburse the city, 18 with amounts that add up to $126,035.56. On 54 R, which is a fee waiver for $7304, I spoke during public comment about Office of Public Safety being at the parks and stuff like this. One of the motions on this event, which has already happened, was that the Office of Public Safety needed to have officers at this event from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There needs to be a way that special events do not take away the public safety from the parks and other people, that the events need to provide their own forms of security. The other thing is, on the farmer's market, that is $72,070, it's one Thursday a month or a week, and it's only a four hours. That ends up being $1,385.96 per Thursday, or $346.49 an hour. Farmer's markets needs to be put in fenced areas so that they don't have to have the street closures. The other thing is, I just heard that there's an amendment to item K. I was wondering, when you have amendments, whether or not they could be read into the records so that the public knows exactly what the amendment is. Again, fee waivers for today, $126,035.56. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. I know we've talked about having that capacity for Van Nuys. Whenever there are amendments, they're available to folks here in council chambers, so anybody can just approach the city clerk's desk, but we'll continue to try to solve that for our Van Nuys public comment folks. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Donna Perman is our next speaker, and then William Morrison.
Okay, thank you. I speak again about fee waivers. First, what cost is that Megabus event? We should know the cost in case they don't pay back. July Follies should be paid by private industry, certainly with all the money Harry Potter makes, which I'm a fan, doesn't have to have the city pay for it beforehand, it should be paid by the event beforehand or private industry. Independence Day, I think is too much money, it's more, even if it is more than one event. No wonder we don't have money for the fund or transportation problems. I just want to say, we need more buses in Los Angeles and Westwood that go locally. Rapids number 20 along Wilshire to Santa Monica, 920, and from the Valley to Westwood. And I want to say, okay, and I see Arts District's fair. I mean, that farmer's market pays a little high, is there a way to cut down on the price? Why should the people who don't go to it have to pay for it? Certainly would be better in the long run. The private companies can show their generosity and get notice in the process. I do believe in added revenue, and I believe in development done in the right way. But of course, I know you'll pass every event, I wish you could say you don't like an item on the list and call it special, but you always pass it, close the roll, tabulate the vote, fourteen ayes, which I know you will do it right now. And I just, please look into that transportation problems about the 720 and the 761, because it's crowded to the hill. No, I'm supposed to say it on public comment, but I can't wait that long, because people are getting knocked down in the buses. Bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is William Morrison.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, I'm seeing about all these reimbursements that the city's giving out. Now, inside my district, I know there's a lot of public safety issues, in which case I've already stated to the councilman, in which case he's not even here, once again. Now, you're spending $16,000 on special events, when we've asked for a safety crosswalk along Caesar Chavez, which is in the works, what I understand, that it's gonna take like two years. Can't we do a rush job and get some of these fee waivers waived to get these issues there? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any council members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Oh, Madam Clerk, excuse me, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 56 called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, did you want 56 and 57 together? Are they related? Okay, we can take up 56 and 57. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm on two reward motions asking the public for assistance. On the first case, number 56, April 30th, 2006, approximately 4:00 a.m., a 29-year-old male by the name of Ronnie Arch was fatally shot in front of 1937 West 43rd Street in South Los Angeles. Mr. Arch was sitting on the front porch, and two other individuals were sitting inside a parked vehicle in front of the location when a dark-colored SUV pulled alongside the parked vehicle and began shooting. Ronnie Arch received a fatal gunshot wound to his head, and one of the individuals in the parked car was injured by the gunfire. Both victims were transported to local hospital. Mr. Arch succumbed by his injuries. There's a $75,000 reward on this because of the two victims, and we ask for any information to be directed to Detective Frank Alvala from Operation South Bureau Criminal Gang Homicide Group at 213-485-2417. Also, on November 11th, 2006, at 1:15 p.m., 38-year-old Jackie Nelson was fatally shot near 49th Street in Normandy in South Los Angeles. Mr. Nelson was walking eastbound on 49th Street when he became involved in a verbal dispute with an unknown suspect. Mr. Nelson continued walking eastbound when an unknown suspect fired several or multiple gunshot, causing his demise. We ask the public if there's any information on this incident, to contact Detective Bernal or Detective Craig, Operation South Bureau Criminal Gang Homicide Group, at 213-485-1383. And this is a $50,000 reward. I'd ask for eye vote on both of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. With that, Madam Clerk, if you'll please prepare the roll on 56 and 57 and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 64 was called special for cards from the public, and there is a substitute motion that has been circulated.
All right, we have a public comment card. Greg Durfee's been very patient, like to come forward and address the council at this time. Thank you.
I'd like to say first, congratulations, Mr. President. Starting the Save the Hollywood Christmas Parade Foundation, one of our, and to Save the Parade campaign, one of our goals was to save the parade. So a yes vote does qualify that and does help that. Mr. Labons, thank you so much for your passion in helping us. And also, Mr. Garcetti, thank you so much for your time, and as patience, I know that sometimes because of my learning disability, it's a little hard. But council, you have an opportunity to extend that parade to the 76th year. We've gotten emails from people from all over the country, including Australia. So I just want to thank you ahead of time and say, for the record, that whatever we can do to help to prolong the parade, even once the RFPs are taken care of, we more than happy want to help do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I will be brief on this, and thank you, Greg, for your great work and for your patience today. Colleagues, this is an RFP for, request for proposals to keep the Holiday Christmas Parade in Hollywood alive. And I want to thank Mr. Labons, who really has been a passionate partner in making sure that we keep this great tradition that after 75 years, the Chamber of Commerce, who did a great job, decided that they couldn't afford to do this parade anymore. But we know that sometimes tens of thousands, as many as probably 100,000 people have come out to that parade. Every day, working Angelinos who love to see marching bands, celebrities, great floats, a parade. We're looking at a larger launch in 2008, but to keep things alive in 2007, we're putting this proposal out there to see if some of the great folks who do some of our special events, as we've seen in the past, like we do for El Grito and other events through the city, whether or not we get some proposals in. And if we do, Mr. Labons and I will be working very hard to ensure that we keep that tradition alive for this year while we rebuild it for 2008. So thank you again to everybody. I ask you for an eye vote, and we'll look forward to a relatively quick turnaround to see what proposals we have out there in the public to keep the Hollywood Holiday Parade alive. So with that, I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, working closely to you. We should do something to celebrate the holiday period on Hollywood Boulevard. And I just want to thank you, and the RFP is gonna be done by Mr. Miller? Is that correct? General Services. Do you think they can turn it around by, in 30 days? Because, yeah. Okay, so we have an opportunity, because all of the city and the county enjoy the Hollywood Parade, and let's get it back on its feet. And I appreciate it, Mr. Garcetti, your support, your leadership on Hollywood Boulevard. I'm standing right with you. Thank you so much. An eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Ms. Hunt.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and say something today. But this is as good as any, and, you know, it's true, it was a collective sigh of disappointment when we heard that there was a possibility that the Hollywood Holiday Parade was not going to exist anymore. And, you know, Tom, it's beyond just the city and California. I had a friend in Dallas, Texas, who has satellite TV, who saw me last Christmas on the mic saying something, and he called me and said, there we were in Dallas, Texas, watching the Hollywood Parade. So it's beyond, everyone loves a parade. Everybody thinks, oh, in this age of technology and kids and families have too many things to do, everyone loves a parade. And I stand right with you two, Eric and Tom, in saying, this is a great idea, let's let the Hollywood Holiday Parade live, live long, and let another generation of kids grow up being excited about going and seeing that parade and all the festivities that go along with it. So I'm with you.
Thank you. And Uncle Nate would be proud of you making sure that you spoke today. That was right. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, a final item for today. I was on radio this morning, KBIG, and we discussed this, Charlie Tuna Show, and I've already received an email from an organization that wants to help sponsor it. I refer them to your office and to Mr. Labons' office. And I think that the information that's being generated, and I sent back the reply, are they willing to do this, donate this, or do they want to be charged? And they said they're willing to donate movie equipment, et cetera, to help out, to bring this back. I also mentioned that we need to get some celebrities, and on the show this morning, we were talking about some celebrities in Hollywood. They all come out for the Oscars, the Emmys, we need them to come out to the Hollywood Christmas Parade, which they used to many, many years ago. And I was talking to Johnny Grant, that was one of the big issues, is getting celebrities, the A-list of celebrities, to come out and participate in that parade. So the publicity's generating some interest, and I'll be moving that on to you and to Mr. Labons, the honorary mayor of Hollywood, along with Johnny Grant, hopefully we'll bring this back. I know as a child, I attended that, and as a policeman, worked it, and as a councilmember rode in it, participated in it. So it's historical, and I think it's around 70, is it 75? 75 years. It's a long tradition, and I think we should hold true for Hollywood and for the city of Los Angeles. That's really the only big parade that we have here. We've got community parades and community activities, but that is the biggest parade. The Rose Parade's been going on for many, many years, but that is history in Los Angeles, the Hollywood Christmas Parade. Used to be called the Santa Claus Lane Parade, way back when Tom Labons was just a little child, and now it's the Hollywood Christmas Parade. So hopefully, anyone who wants to participate, shows interest, actors, celebrities, contact Councilmember Labons, contact Councilmember Garcetti, the people that coordinate Hollywood activities, because we'd like to keep this on the map. And I understand we want to do it this year and not postpone it, but to do it this year, and it's normally the Sunday after Thanksgiving, so hopefully we can make that happen for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labons?
Thank you very much. I just want to again, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and we'll all work real hard to try to get some RFPs back to make a choice, and look for the leadership of your staff and office in helping them.
Thank you. So with that, if we can prepare the roll, Madam Clerk, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Send that forthwith, please, without objection. Next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Council has motions for posting referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at 11:15 on Wednesday, July 25th for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves. Doesn't require a motion, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on July 17th for city business. A motion is required.
I will move on Mr. Zine's excuse, and Ms. Gruel seconds without objection.
And Councilmember Zine again, requests to be excused October 26th, 30th, and 31st, as well as November 2nd, for personal business. That meets council policy.
I see some objections out there. Mr. Zine, would you like to speak to the matter? All right, we'll go ahead and move those excuses as well.
That clears the desk.
Now it's time for announcements. Colleagues, the first announcement is that on Tuesday next week and Wednesday next week, July 10th and 11th, we will be meeting at the Doubletree Hotel in San Pedro for a special goal-setting session. It will be open to the public for those who would like to attend in Cabrillo Marina in San Pedro. It will begin at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, the 10th, recess at 5:30, and reconvene on Wednesday at 9:00 and adjourn at 12:00 p.m. Please be advised, there'll be no remote testimony from downtown City Hall or Van Nuys due to that location during the special goal-setting session, and that agenda will be posted by Friday, July 6th. Secondly, we will be out of session tomorrow for the holiday, for July 4th, and we certainly want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Independence Day. And reiterate, it is such a dry year this year that fireworks are always illegal here in the city of Los Angeles, but be extra vigilant in your communities for the legal use of fireworks, considering how dry and how much fuel we have in this town with the brush that is around. We certainly do not want to see fires going off tomorrow throughout the city of Los Angeles, and let's all take a special role in making sure that doesn't happen. Other announcements? Ms. Gruel?
Thank you. Yes, just a couple in that vein. We do encourage people to go to organized fireworks shows that are gonna happen. I have two in my district, one in Sanlito Hanga for Joga Hills High School, the other is at CBS Studios. Also, just to let you know, a little bit of a warning, LAPD and the Fire Department will be working cooperatively together in the San Fernando Valley to go after individuals who have illegal fireworks. So want to just let you know that that is not legal. Fireworks are not legal in the city of Los Angeles. We encourage you to go to those organized events. Also, there'll be a parade in Sanlito Hanga, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Valley Village has a parade, and just most importantly, for everyone to enjoy their holiday, 4th of July, and support independence. And a shout-out to my son, happy birthday, Thomas, on your four-year-old birthday tomorrow.
Other announcements? Mr. Alekon?
Yes, members, I have three announcements. First of all, speaking of 4th of July celebrations, tomorrow, the largest celebration in the San Fernando Valley will occur at Hanson Dam. I mentioned this last week. The celebration begins at 11:30 a.m. and goes all day. The fireworks start at 9:00 p.m., weather permitting, and it looks like weather will[1769.66] The fireworks start at 9:00 PM, weather permitting, and it looks like weather will be permitting. This event was started actually when I came to council in 1994. It's been that long. And we reinstated this program, which occurred when I was a young man, actually, a young child, we used to go to Hanson Dam. Well, now it's been a success for 14 years straight. We expect anywhere from 10,000 to 30,000 people to attend this event at Hanson Dam. Last year was down to 10,000, Greg, but in the past, it has been as many as 30,000 people going to the Hanson Dam celebration. So this is a very secure and supervised way to enjoy the 4th of July holiday. I also sadly want to mention that today, we held a conference, a press conference to announce that I be introducing a motion to provide a $50,000 reward for information regarding the shooting death of Hector Baldarama in, Balderra, excuse me, in Panorama City. So we are offering an award as an incentive to try and find out who shot him on March 25th, 2007, in Panorama City on the corner of Tobias Avenue near Nordoff. The victim was 19 years old and had only lived in Panorama City for a year, had no family in the San Fernando Valley, so we're really asking the community if they would step forward, if they were at the park, on Tobias at that time, and witnessed something, please come forward with information. This, we think it was a case of mistaken identity, where the victim was not a gang member. However, he, because of a large tattoo on his neck and the way he shaved his hair close to the head, could be confused as a gang member, and it might be a reminder to others who dress in that way, that they could create, make themselves a target. But in this case, he was not affiliated with any gang. He was a hard-working, day laborer who just was trying to get by, and hopefully, somebody from the community will come forward with information that will lead to an arrest and conviction. Finally, I just want to remind people that the swimming pools are open, and tomorrow we will be holding a press conference to announce that we'll be giving free sunscreen information. A lot of people just go to the pools and have fun, or they send their kids there, but we want to remind them that there are health responsibilities related to swimming, and one of them includes sunscreen and to avoid long-term problems with skin cancer, which is rampant throughout the Southern California community. Also, the, I can't speak in specific terms with the 7th Council District, but I can tell people that when I was the Assemblyperson for a few months, that the 39th Assembly District has been determined by the Health Department of the State of California to be the most obese community in the state of California. And the Senate District, which would include the 40th Assembly District all the way to Canoga Park, was the second most obese community in the state of California. And so, and so, swimming is a great way to stay in shape, and we want to not just talk about having fun at the swimming pools with supervised activity for the kids, so that they're not doing unsupervised activities, but also, there are some health responsibilities, and parents should be aware of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Ms. Hahn.
Fireworks show, I think it's the best in Southern California, over the water in Cabrillo Beach, starts at 9:00 PM tomorrow night down in San Pedro. You can only imagine fireworks being shot off from a barge out on the ocean. It'll be, and the USS Rents is here for Navy Days, so they will be there as well. Anyway, I think it's one of the best fireworks show in Southern California, although the Coliseum also has a very good one. But if you've never seen fireworks over the water, come on down.
U.S.C. fireworks.
Mr. Parks.
I have two announcements. First of all, the 5th Annual 8th District Jazz Festival in Lemur Park will be tomorrow, July 4th, 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the parking lot at Vision Theater. And then, the absolute best fireworks show in the areas at the L.A. Coliseum starts right at dusk, and certainly want to thank Ms. Perry, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wesson, and also the 8th District for help putting that on. So everyone's invited to come out and have a great time.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Perry, then Mr. Zine.
I have to concur with Mr. Parks, and this is no slight to Ms. Hahn, but the advantage of coming to our fireworks show is the following. You can experience a surround effect, okay? And ours is free, of course, and the parking is free, of course, and you can have a picnic beforehand in Christmas Tree Lane.
Is there a Navy boat in the backdrop of the Coliseum?
Well, we don't have a body of water from which to draw.
Right, I was just checking on that.
Yeah.
Got you. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I mean, Ms. Hahn has the waterfront, it's gorgeous. Mr. Parks and Perry have the Coliseum, but up in Port Arant, you can look at all three of them, because we look down on all those from Port Arant. Yes, we do. And we're free, and it starts up at Shepherd of the Hills Church. 60,000 people have been there the last couple of years. It's free. We put extra fire trucks up there, just make sure we got water, we got singers, we got dancers, all beginning at 4:00, when the fireworks went sundown. So come on, see the biggest one in the valley. Let's see, we got the one. And you can look at the Coliseum, and you can look at the harbor from out there, too.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Well, we have one with not only the free fireworks show, but a free concert. So it's a free concert and a free fireworks show. Charlie Tuna will be the emcee. The mayor is scheduled to be there, along with F-14, courtesy of Congressman Brad Sherman. And it is going to be at Warner Center Park, Topanga, north of the 101 freeway. The fireworks begin around 9:00 PM. The Warner Center Park is open all day, so we encourage people to come with their families, enjoy a picnic lunch. It's scheduled to be 104 tomorrow, and 104.3 is KBIG Radio. And since Charlie Tuna is going to be hosting, 104.3 is appropriate for the temperature, but we will be able to see a wonderful fireworks show. Again, our mayor is supposed to join us, as he has done for the past few years, Warner Center Park. But with this mentioned, people have written letters to the editor, why don't we have free fireworks shows anymore? Well, we do have free fireworks shows, whether it's in the Coliseum, or San Pedro, or the San Fernando Valley. They're all over the city of Los Angeles. I know Congressman, Councilman Jose Weisar has one out in East Los Angeles, so there's many free fireworks shows. You don't need to go out and buy fireworks and launch them off your neighborhood and cause a fire, so there's no excuse to do that, to break the law. And of the previous law enforcement activities, this year, there's been a number of arrests with large quantities of fireworks confiscated, so they're very serious about making arrests and confiscating those fireworks. So again, anywhere in the city of Los Angeles, we have fireworks shows, and I will promote the one that we have in the San Fernando Valley, in Warner Center Park. And we will watch the ones up in Shepherd of the Hills with Greg Smith, and you'll watch the ones that launch down at Warner Center Park. So it's going to be a wonderful day for everyone, so we wish everyone a happy 4th of July. And remember, our military personnel that are in combat, we're enjoying the festivities of the 4th of July.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Alakon. I will not be wearing leather. I will be wearing red, white, and blue. I only wear leather because Mr. Rosenthal asked me to wear leather for the parade.
Mr. Zine?
And Mr. Garcetti was on the back of my Harley Davidson, and he loved that leather.
Mr. Zine, some questions are best left unanswered.
We won't tell them our secret.
The best, the best fireworks show, with my understanding, I appreciate everybody else's contributions, is actually over at Dodger Stadium in Echo Park. Mr. Reyes, did you want to inform everybody about that?
Well, I want to thank my council president and neighbor. When you look up on the hill of Elysian Park, it's probably the highest point of the city, and you have a tremendous, tremendous view of fireworks that is just extraordinary. Throughout all northeast, all of Central LA, you just see it beaming over all the hills. So I invite all of you to enjoy it as well. But just as important, and I want to echo this, we can't emphasize this anymore, the driest season in a long time, the hills up in the northeast are very, very tender, they're ready to burst into flame. Please enjoy the fireworks that are free, don't burn your money, because you might get arrested and burn even more. So please take note of the illegalities of lighting your own fireworks in your backyard. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
And one more point, if you see people launching fireworks illegally, make sure you notify the police department, notify the police, notify the fire department, they will respond, they will make arrests. You're going to save your home, you're going to save your neighborhood, so report those that are illegally launching fireworks in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. I can ask everybody in council chambers to rise for adjourning motions.
And rises, I just wanted to second what Dennis said about those serving, you know, we're, it's a great day for independence of the United States, and remember that, but and also, for any of those, the Hollywood Bowl has programs tonight, tomorrow night, and concerts for the 4th of July.
I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Carol Erickson, who passed away on the 29th of June at the University of Washington Hospital in Seattle. She's the aunt of my chief of staff, David Gershwin, and passed away at the age of 60 after a battle with lymphoma this past Friday. She was born in New York City, came to Los Angeles with the Gershwin family in the 1950s, where her father came to pursue business opportunities, and her mother worked in the May Company Department Store at Wilshire and Fairfax. Carol was a student at Hancock Park Elementary and John Burrows Middle School, while she and her family lived at 6th and La Jolla Streets in the Fairfax District. She was a graduate of UC Berkeley, worked in university administration while continuing to live in the Bay Area, and moved with her husband to Spokane, Washington, Spokane, Washington, where they enjoyed frequent canoe trips, bird sightings, and even the occasional moose sighting in their backyard. She was a very accomplished quilter, and through her quilting clubs, was able to make long-lasting friendships with others who shared her passion. She's survived by her husband Eric, daughter Julie, grandson Ben, brother Lawrence, six nieces and nephews. I also join today here in council chambers by the father of Robert Peasecheck, who died at the age of 37 on Monday, June 18th, 2007. He was a victim of a traffic collision that occurred on Sunset Boulevard just west of Detroit Street, I believe in Mr. LaBanche's district. He died shortly after arriving at Cedar Sinai Medical Center, and the driver of the victim, sorry, the driver of the car was arrested and booked for vehicular manslaughter, DUI, and gross negligence. Robert was born on May 27th, 1970, and raised in Skokie, Illinois, moved to Los Angeles in the early to mid 1990s, and he loved living in Los Angeles, where he frequently was found swimming, skiing, and fishing. He worked as a telemarketer for a nonprofit organization in Los Angeles for the past seven years. When he was younger, he wanted to be an architect and would draw elaborate floor plans, a great artist, constantly drawing cartoon characters, a lover of heavy metal music, a pet lover, especially of his childhood dog, Fluffy, a stray from the local fire department, and a fan of sports, including martial arts and baseball. He was quite an athlete and taught his sister Brenda how to swim, not leaving her side until she learned. He was a kind man, calling his brother-in-law Kevin McLean on Father's Day to wish him Happy Father's Day, but he loved their family and was very excited for the birth of his second nephew, niece, that was due in December. Robert leaves behind his father, Casimir, who's here today, Peasecheck, his only sibling, Brenda McLean, and his nephew, Colin McLean. Robert has various cousins, but was particularly close to William Morrison, who is also with us in the audience today. Brenda is watching this from Chicago. May Robert Peasecheck rest in peace. Thank you. Second for Mr. LaBanche. Ms. Gruehl?
Thank you. As we think about July 4th and all of our men and women in Iraq and all over the world, it saddens me today to have to acknowledge actually the first soldier from my district that passed away, Sergeant Giancarlo Joya Mendoza. He passed away on Thursday, June 28th, 2007. He was killed by enemy fire and was on active military duty in Iraq. He was just 27 years old. The North Hollywood resident had accumulated numerous honors since joining the armed services on September 14th, 1999, including an Army Good Contact Medal, a National Defense Service Medal, a Korean Defense Service Medal, a Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, an Army Service Ribbon, an Overseas Service Ribbon, and an Expert Infantry Badge. He began his service in Bravo Company, 2nd Battalion, 12th Infantry Regiment, 2nd Brigade Combat Team, and 2nd Infantry Division on his first tour of duty in Iraq. Sergeant Giancarlo Joya Mendoza would have celebrated his 28th birthday tomorrow. So according to his mother, she, Maria Inez Mendoza, he went into the Army because he wanted to defend the country. The city of Los Angeles and the residents of the United States will never forget his